Okay, everybody ready? Ready to go?
Yep.
Well, good evening, everybody, and welcome to the Tuesday, May 7th, 2019, meeting of the Edina City Council. Roll call, please, Ms. Tim.
Member Anderson?
Here.
Member Brendel?
Here.
Member Fisher?
Here.
Member Staunton?
Here.
Mayor Hovland?
Here. We have in front of us this evening a form of meeting agenda. Manager Neal, is there anything you wanted to change on the meeting agenda?
No, sir, there is not.
Member Brendel, I think you wanted to remove, make a motion on the consent agenda with regard to 5G.
That's correct.
Do you want to remove that from the agenda and hold it over for two weeks?
That's correct.
Okay. Would you make a motion of that effect, please?
I would make a motion that we move, or we hold over item 5G to the next council meeting on May 21st.
Okay, thank you. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we've got a motion, a second on 5G to hold...
May I ask Member Brendel a question? Did we, that was the issue that we resolved with, or not, did we not resolve that?
We discussed, but, but the mayor and I discussed it before the, before the work session and thought that we could, we could have a little more conversation about it and then bring it back on May 21st.
Yeah, we thought it would be an item that would take some time, and we've got a busy evening this evening with many folks here, so. Director Milner, would that work, okay to hold this matter over for two weeks until the 21st?
If you so choose, we'll be happy to answer any questions you have on it and bring it back on the 21st.
All right, we've got a motion, a second to hold item 5G, which is a request for purchase for vegetated stormwater best management practices program services over until the May 21st, 2019, meeting of the Edina City Council. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. And then we have, we have to go back up and then approve the amended agenda. Is our motion to approve the agenda as amended?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve the meeting agenda as amended. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. And then, community comment. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council on a matter that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? I see two folks rising already to address the council, so welcome.
Thank you. All right, good evening. My name is Annie Matt-Kinnon. I live at 4412 West 58th Street. I'm here on behalf of my neighbors, they're all standing behind me. You guys got a detailed summary of what we're requesting. I'm here to talk to you and express our needs and concerns for the reconstruction of our street. As a residential neighborhood, we are focused on safety and community. We are a neighborhood that includes Pamela Park, a major park the city has invested heavily in, and multiple schools, including Concord, Normandale, Southview Middle School, the Edina Family Center, and Community Center. We enjoy all the amenities the neighborhood has to offer and what they bring. We travel around by car, on foot, and by bike, as do others who visit and travel through our neighborhood. Sharing the road is important, but so is our neighborhood. In addition to the speed and volume of cars we experience each day, we have a steep, blind, sight hill between Wooddale Avenue and Philbrook Lane, which causes concern for all users. We want to make sure, as we share the road and the construction designs are being finalized, the reconstruction is done in a safe and community-minded manner. Through our participation, we have concerns about the city's approach to reconstructing 58th Street, and want to make sure the city seriously considers the neighborhood's concerns. The initial design presented to us does not adequately address the safety of the community. Here are 13 areas we would like you to consider. First, a concrete sidewalk on the north side for pedestrian use only. Two, bike lanes on the street are diverted through Pamela Park or on Philbrook Lane. Three, maintain some areas of parking along West 58th Street. Four, alert drivers to the blind intersection on the hill. Five, no roundabout at the entrance, entrance of Pamela Park at Philbrook Lane. Five, preserve as many trees as possible. Seven, a flashing light crosswalk, pedestrian activated, at 58th and Philbrook Lane, located at the entrance of Pamela Park. Narrow lanes and posted speed limit signs with flashing monitors, much like those found on 70th Street, in Interlochen to reduce speeds. Nine, concern about additional loss of driveway space. Ten, additional lights along West 58th and by Pamela Park. Eleven, eliminating flooding on 58th at the bottom of the hill and by the park. Twelve, preserve wildlife between Brookview Avenue and Halifax. Thirteen, additional community design review. Attached to your forms, you'll see a list of signatures. We've got 43 of our neighbors to sign on to this, which includes 28 households. So, we feel that with the proposed changes, this will increase safety, livability, and aesthetics of our neighborhood.
Good, thanks, Ms. Matt-Kinnon.
Thank you.
Thank you for good time management, too.
Okay, thank you.
All right, all right, thanks, everybody, for coming this evening. Oh, go ahead, yes.
One more addition, Sounissen, 4408 West 58th Street, at the crest of the hill on 58th Street. And I just wanted to draw attention to the last point that Annie talked about. We really feel like, from our viewpoint, going straight to final design, we're not ready, and we don't think the city is ready. There are so many issues to consider on 58th Street, and the process, there was some confusion with terminology and other things, clarity in the process, and we brought up a lot of things that we really think we need to see and need to be addressed before we go into final design.
All right, good. All right, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Sounissen.
Sounissen.
N-I-S-S-E-N.
Anyone else from the group wishes to speak? Yes?
I'm not with that group, but I am, I'm so glad that you're here. My name is Courtney Wyded, and I'm at 5829 Chowin Avenue South, and I'm in the neighborhood just east of the neighborhood you're just talking about, and I'm here, too, for concerns about 58th and Chowin in particular, which is at the end of my block. And I did submit my comments via the form, so I want to stick to that for consistency of restating those tonight. We have lived at that address for 14 years. My husband and my two elementary children, my daughter is here tonight, nine years old, who attends Highlands, and that street has been a known informal cut-through for years. We didn't know that before we purchased, bypassed between Xerxes and France. It is also known as an arterial road, which is that collector road to connect you to France and onto the freeways. People have consistently drove fast through that because it's two long blocks, and now with the road construction impending, people are even more angry, and I myself have encountered people who have looked directly at me and drove right at me, so I had to come up on the grass. I'm concerned, as we're heading into the summer season, I'm concerned of all the folks who might not even be walking, because it's already been a concern to walk, bike, or whatnot. I was, also wanted to say that we took some informal notations here. Car traffic going east on 60th Street is routinely backed up from Xerxes to Beard each day when I leave for work at 7:30 in the morning. My husband returns home each day around 11:30 a.m., and our children return home from school at 3:00 p.m., and I come home about 5:36. Each day, we've seen that consistent backup. 58th Street from Xerxes to Wooddale already has pedestrian and bike safety issues, as the previous speaker had shared. The marked bike-ped path is narrow and eroding away, and has higher traffic count than the corresponding side streets. We are left with unsafe routes to Chowin Park, Pamela Park, several metro transit bus stops, and to Southview, Concord, and Normandale Schools. We have designed communities for a lifetime with our design lens, and so I want to make sure and reference that tonight, that as we redesign 58th Street, we are looking at that. Also at 58th and Chowin, there is four different school bus stops right there each day, for Canilia, Southview, the high school, and Concord Elementary. I thank you for your time and consideration this night.
Okay, good. When you and I spoke, Ms. Wyded, you had talked about some more effective crosswalk markings at 58th and Chowin.
Oh, I'm sorry, I didn't make my recommendation, sorry, I was kind of nervous.
Yes, so I was going to ask you if you had a recommendation.
I also, the other thing is that it's a known informal safer walking path from this neighborhood to 50th and France versus taking France Avenue. That sidewalk is not safer maintained, and we were requesting an enhanced crosswalk there at 58th Street of any manner, to make sure people are crossing safely to any of those areas I was describing. Thank you for reminding me of that.
All right, thank you. And now I want to go back to the group from 58th Street, west of France Avenue. Was there anyone else that wished to, wished to speak to the council? Yeah, okay, all right, good. So we've got your correspondence. As soon as we finish Concerns of Residents, I'm going to ask the engineer a couple of questions, so, yes, that's her, please.
Hi, my name is Bill Sierks, S-I-E-R-K-S, and addresses 5713 Brook Drive, Edina. And I'm here today just to talk about energy benchmarking, very briefly. I was the first chair of the Edina Energy and Environment Commission, and was a member of that commission for almost nine years, and I have heard from the current chair, Carolyn Jackson, that the city council is going to be considering a benchmarking ordinance in the near future, so just wanted to very briefly mention our kind of historical relationship with benchmarking, and the fact that it can provide really useful, valuable information, both for public and private buildings. At the city, with the commission and with the city staff, when I was on the commission, we worked with the Public Building Energy Benchmarking System, which was called, actually, no, I forget, B3 Building Benchmarking and Beyond, and Chair Fisher, you would know this, or Councilman Fisher, you would know this very well, because LHB really was the architect of that system. There are hundreds of public buildings, state and local, in that system, and the value of energy benchmarking, very briefly, is that it tells the building owner and operator how much money and energy go into heating and cooling a building over a year, and what becomes, what's very valuable is that if you have a comparison of, let's say, you're a restaurant of 25,000 square feet, you will know how much you're spending on your energy costs. If you can compare that with other similarly sized restaurants in the area, you can identify, without a whole lot of analysis, am I spending a whole lot more or less on energy than, you know, similar buildings that are operated in the same way? And what the city has found, when you use that comparison data, we learned that our city hall, for example, was much higher in energy use than similarly situated city halls. We knew that. Edinburgh was also very high in energy costs, and the city staff designed energy projects targeting those higher energy use systems, because there's basically more bang for the buck there. So, the real value that city staff has had, and that we were encouraging while I was on the commission, is just to really understand how your energy costs relate to your buildings, and to use the money that you've got for energy improvements. If you can rely on that data, you can make much more cost-effective decisions. So I think that would be valuable, both for public and for private buildings. So thank you very much for the opportunity. I just wanted to say, the last time I was here, I was a member of the commission, I was also talking about buildings, because that was for the community solar garden on Public Works, so I'm happy to be back. Thanks for your attention.
All right, thanks, Mr. Sierks, nice to see you again. We got real lucky with Bill Sierks on our first Energy and Environment Commission. He works over at the MPCA, so we had a built-in skill set there that was really valuable as we started working on energy and environmental issues. Anyone else in the audience wish to address the council on a matter of concern to them under the Concerns of Residents portion of the agenda? Yes, sir, good evening.
I think I've got enough for the council and city manager. I'm going to need a microphone and some assistance to get this in place. So, it's a little bit more than eight and a half by 11, can you?
Yeah.
All right. All right, so the strategy is to start it there and then pick it up. All right, I guess we're all set. My name is Frank Lorenz, 7151 York Avenue South, Edina, 55435. This is the second half of an item that I brought up about three meetings ago, and it relates to the city's ongoing computations of affordable housing. Edina uses a Hennepin County median household income, which is $91,000 a year, but the actual number for Edina is much higher, it's at least $125,000 plus. That actual number is available either from the state demographer, or from the Internal Revenue Service, but you have to pay the Revenue Service to get it. They charge you about $5,000 for it, and you probably can't get a year more current than 2017, but in any event, Edina uses a number that's way lower than the real number. Then they apply the workforce factor of 60%, which makes the $91,000 54.6, and it makes the $125,000 75,000. Then they apply a 30% affordable housing factor, which is what HUD and the Met Council suggest. That brings the target rent for affordable down to $16,389 a year, or using the real numbers, $22,005, and I've converted that to a monthly rent, $1366 a month, or $1875 if you're using the real numbers. A 22-year-old teacher with a bachelor's degree in Edina and education starts out in the Edina school system about $46,000 a year, I believe, and I hope the police chief won't shoot me if this is wrong, but a new hire police or fire department employee in the city of Edina starts out about $55,000 a year. But the Hennepin County numbers for household median income, they're normally two people, two adults, working to get that household income. Two new teachers, as roommates, have a household income of $92,000. Two new fire or police employees would have a household income of $110,000. Both of those numbers are much higher than the 60% workforce number using the real Edina numbers. Edina is needlessly strangling its architects and developers in their boxer shorts to add an X-fire percent, X-factor percentage of affordable housing units to each new apartment building, when in fact, the market rate that these developers come in with, the rents, are already below the computed affordable target rates you're trying to get at, if you would only use the correct numbers. All the city council's four-hour-long meetings and five different agonizing redesigns of proposed housing are for naught. My junior high school math teacher explained to me...
Mr. Lorenz, I need to have you wrap up.
...one number by any other number, as long as the divisor isn't zero. That's still true today.
Mr. Lorenz, thank you. We'll take this under advisement, and the city manager will address this in two weeks, so, and I'll talk about that just momentarily. Is there anyone else that wishes to address the council on a matter of concern to them that's not otherwise on the agenda this evening? Okay. See no one coming forward, are going to close the community comment portion of the agenda, and then we're going to move on to the city manager's response to community comments. So, the comments Mr. Lorenz just made, the city manager will address these in two weeks when we have a chance to take a look at his numbers and talk to the folks that are working in this particular area. There were comments made a couple of weeks ago that he's going to address now, and I think one of those was indeed by Mr. Lorenz.
Yeah, in fact, it is by Mr. Lorenz. There was a question that he has raised a number of times, and I've answered a number of times, regarding the propriety of, of purchasing fire trucks, the way that we have recently purchased new fire trucks. I can tell you that in, in previous times that we've, I've answered this question, that the reason that we decided to go forward with this, with the kind of, of purchasing methodology, we did this most recent, this most recent set of trucks, was really for a couple of reasons. One, it provided us a better overall financial package, when we look at a 10-year timeframe and how we replace our vehicles inside our, our vehicle replacement fund. It also provided a, a much better operational environment for our firefighters, and that's important, because they're providing an important service to residents of Edina, and we think that's a goal that we've had from the council, it's a goal that we've had from the community, to have excellence in that area of our service level. So, that's what I would say to that. It's, it's the same answer we've answered on a number of occasions.
All right, for comments from council members? All right, thank you, Manager Neal. We have a consent agenda in front of us this evening, council members. We have removed 5G. Is there, is there a motion to approve the balance of the consent agenda, with the exception of 5G? So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, a second to approve the consent agenda, with the exception of 5G, which has been moved to our May 21st meeting. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried? Yeah, folks from 58th Street, folks, want to hold on for just a minute? Yeah, thanks for that reminder. Yeah, bear, bear with us a second, if you want to come back in, or just stand back there. So, we've got a process going on, on West 58th Street, because we recognize that as having some real challenges, and I just wanted to have the city engineer bring us up to speed on where we are, and what's the next steps, and how do we continue the community engagement part of it, as we work towards a, a final design that addresses the speed and volume aesthetic issues, et cetera.
Yeah, thanks, Mayor, and members of the council. This is exactly the type of feedback we've been getting. This is great. We've gotten hundreds and hundreds of comments thus far. The comments have been to just one, our first stab at a design. So we're, we are currently taking all this feedback, and we're going to be posting a new design in a couple of weeks for, to take in. Most of the points that you've heard tonight, we're already considering, we just haven't had an opportunity, because comments closed on April 26th. So we're coming back to you on June 4th with a report out of how the process went, kind of where we got to thus far, and then this process continues through all levels of design up to construction next year. So, I would just ask for a little patience while we look through all these hundreds and hundreds of comments. We hope to post a report, how we addressed each one of the points you've heard here tonight, before we come back to that June 4th meeting. We're looking to post another design iteration with that report, hopefully about a week before that June 4th meeting. So, I think we're right in the process, we just haven't had a chance to address a lot of the comments we received, because we just closed it, and we're working through it based on the process we had approved with the city council.
All right, and then subsequent to June 4th, when you have the next potential iteration of a design, what will be the ways in which we can engage residents that live over there, either east or west of France Avenue and 58th Street, and, and the continual refinement of that design?
Yeah, so the hope on June 4th is that we have a general understanding of what that facility will look like, and we do our normal process of individual meetings, talking about driveway issues, trees, all those sort of things, through the summer and fall, before we have the public hearing in December, when we have that special meeting in December. So, lots of individual meetings at that point, once we have that general understanding of what that section could look like.
Council members have questions? Member Staunton, did you have? Okay. So I'm just concerned that we get to June 4th, and we've got another iteration, that's going to address a lot of these issues. There may be more issues that come up. Is it possible that there would be another opportunity for people to be able to comment on the, on the, I'll call it the June 4th iteration, before we get to the hearing in December, which, which seems to be to me more efficient, as you, as you refine your way on the, on the process, towards a December hearing for a potential preliminary assessment and a final design?
Yeah.
Why wouldn't we want more public input along the way?
I think we are. We are for sure, because on the 4th, we're going to have some idea of where we're at, we're going to get a lot of comments from you, that's kind of our check-in. You're hearing comments from the neighborhoods, and then we'll continue on with the process of taking feedback. Maybe you'll say that you don't agree with one, one of these issues that staff has an opinion, or you'll tell us to go back to the neighborhood and let's keep working on it. So we need to kind of check in on that June 4th meeting, and then we're going to take feedback from this group, and continue those next steps based on that feedback.
All right, good, so that's, June 4th is our chance to give you our feedback...
Exactly, we want to...
...based on what we're hearing from neighbors, or what we think about ourselves, and then we'll go back to work on it some more.
And we want to tell you about all the feedback we received thus far.
Okay, all right, seems logical. Okay. Sorry, we're done with, yeah. But we can stay, you can stay in touch with folks, thank you, with the city engineer, or, if you have something you want to write up, we can hand it to the clerk, you know, in terms of a question?
That's okay.
Okay, all right, thank you. All right, so if you want to head home, you're welcome to head home. Or you can stay here until the wee hours. All right, we're going to move on to special recognitions and presentations, and the first one we have in this section of the agenda this evening is National Police Week, and this is extraordinarily important. A week coming up, the, the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2019, it's a proclamation designating that week as National Police Week, and the proclamation reads as follows: "Whereas the week of May 12th through the 18th, 2019, is National Police Week in the United States, and whereas there are approximately 900,000 law enforcement officers in service to communities across the United States, including the dedicated members of the Edina Police Department, and whereas over 60,000 assaults against law enforcement officers are reported each year, resulting in approximately 17,000 injuries, and whereas since the first recorded death in 1791, a total of 21,000 law enforcement officers in the United States have made the ultimate sacrifice and been killed in the line of duty, and whereas the names of these dedicated public servants are engraved on the walls of the National Law Enforcement Memorial in Washington, D.C., and whereas 371 new names of fallen heroes are being added to the National Law Enforcement Memorial this, memorial this spring, including 158 officers killed in 2018, 158 officers killed in 2018, and 231 officers who died in the previous years, but whose stories of sacrifice have been lost to history until now. And whereas the service and sacrifice of all officers killed in the line of duty will be honored during the National Law Enforcement Officers Memorial Fund's 31st Annual Candlelight Vigil on May 13th, 2019, in Washington, Washington, D.C., and whereas the candlelight vigil is part of National Police Week, which takes place this year on May 12th through the 18th. And whereas May 15th is designated as Peace Officers Memorial Day, in honor of all the fallen officers and their families, and U.S. flags should be flown at half-staff on that particular day. Now therefore, the city council of the city of Edina, Minnesota hereby proclaims May 12th through the 18th, 2019, as National Police Week in the city of Edina, and calls upon the people of Edina to observe this week in honor of the men and women whose diligence and professionalism keep the residents of Edina safe." Is there a motion to adopt the proclamation? So moved.
Second.
Is there a second? Got a motion, a second to adopt the proclamation, recognizing National Police Week, 2019. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye opposed, carried. We've got Sergeant David Venney with us this evening. I've got a formal copy of the proclamation, I'm going to bring down to him. I think he's got some remarks for us.
I did know about our address.
You can go ahead and make them now, Sergeant.
All right. Mr. Mayor, thank you so much for the proclamation, we really appreciate it. Like, like you said, I'm David Venney, I'm one of the sergeants for the Edina Police Department. This year, unfortunately, there have been 39 line-of-duty deaths for law enforcement, including one in Minnesota. It is essential we remember these fallen officers as someone's child, brother, sister, mother, or father. Law enforcement is a unique and challenging business, and the difficulties our officers face will continue to challenge us. It is important to know that our officers will continue to respond to these challenges with compassion, integrity, and care. with compassion, integrity, and care for the community. We work for the best department in the state and we are fortunate to serve the best community. Thank you again for the opportunity to be here tonight and the proclamation.
19th through the 25th, 2019. And that proclamation reads as follows. Whereas emergency medical services is a vital public service and whereas the members of emergency medical services teams are ready to provide lifesaving care to those in need 24 hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injury. And whereas trees and forests improve our physical health by cleaning the air, reducing exposure to the sun's UV rays, and decreasing temperatures during the summertime. And whereas emergency medical services has grown to fill a gap by providing important out-of-hospital care, including preventative medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the emergency medical services system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedics, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public, and other out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the emergency medical services teams, whether career or volunteer, engage in thousands of hours of specialized training and continued education to enhance their lifesaving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and accomplishments of emergency medical services providers by designating Emergency Medical Services Week. Now therefore, the City Council of the City of Edina, Minnesota hereby proclaims the week of May 19th through the 25th, 2019 as Emergency Medical Services Week in the City of Edina with the theme EMS Strong Beyond the Call. I encourage the community to observe this week and with appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Is there a motion to adopt that proclamation?
Some move.
Second.
Is there a second? We got a motion and a second to adopt the Emergency Medical Services Week proclamation. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye, opposed? Carried? And Chief, I noticed a couple sentences in here that need to be cleaned up.
Yeah, that was a possible cut in pace from somewhere. Anyways.
I just want to say thank you very much, Mayor Hovland and the council. Last year, we did just under 6,000 runs in the fire department and about 78% of those are requests for ambulance services. We have been on a record pace for the last several years and we are, again, think that we will exceed 6,000 runs this year. And again, most of those are going to be EMS-related runs. Last year, you guys made a decision to support our increased workload by adding some staff. And part of that addition was the addition of an EMS chief. So tonight, I'd like to introduce to you Chief Ryan Quinn, our new EMS chief. He is spearheading a lot of the EMS work that we do. So we're very proud of that and thank you very much for that. So I'll let Ryan introduce himself and he's got a couple of things about the proclamation. So thank you.
Good evening, Mayor. And council members, thank you very much for adopting this proclamation recognizing EMS Week. We provide a team-based approach to emergency medical events here in Edina, beginning with our own emergency medical dispatchers. They translate those first moments of a 911 call into vital information that they relay to our police officers. They respond as our first responders and then on to our paramedics, who as the only fire-based EMS system in the County of Hennepin, we respond with two paramedic firefighters in the ambulance from our stations 24 hours a day, seven days a week. Our EMS team in Edina is well-trained, motivated, and dedicated to provide the highest quality of care to our citizens and our visitors. We are extremely fortunate to work for such a supportive community and council and will continue to do our very best for you. Thank you again for your support.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. I have the pleasure tonight to introduce Danny McCullough from Three Rivers Park District. He's going to present on the proposed Canadian Pacific Rail Regional Trail. The purpose of this meeting, of this presentation is to update the council on the work that's been done thus far and how this proposed trail will impact the City of Edina. No action is requested at this time, although staff will be coming back to council ideally on the 21st or sometime after, requesting a resolution of support for Segment A of this master plan. So with that, I'll turn it over to Danny McCullough.
Thank you, Mr. Sipioni.
Thank you.
Mr. McCullough, welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and council members. Tough act to follow with the police and fire. So I'm here tonight to talk to you about the CP Rail Regional Trail Master Plan project that we have been working on in conjunction with city staff here in Edina as well as staff in Bloomington. So the CP Rail Regional Trail Corridor, this would be, this is an envisioned regional trail that would connect eventually all the way from Crystal down to the Minnesota River. And the corridor is approximately 21 miles long and we did two things with this master plan project. One, we sort of set the framework for the greater plan and we divided it into six sort of chapters or segments. And those six segments are sort of logical connections of future trail between existing regional trails as opportunities arise. And the real focus of what I want to talk to you about tonight and the focus of our master plan work that we've been doing for almost a year now is Segment A. If you look at the map in front of you, you'll see A, B, C, D, E, F. Segment A is the connection from the existing Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail down to the Minnesota River. So Segment A is approximately seven miles long. 5.7 of those miles are existing trail in Bloomington. And those trails actually go through part of Highland, Bush, Anderson Lakes Park Reserve and are already there today. So don't cost a lot to construct, obviously. But the city of Bloomington has building out, been building out their trail system in that area for quite some time to regional trail standards. So as part of this study, we just include that as part of the greater trail. The 1.3 new miles that I want to talk to you about tonight very briefly are the trail in Edina. And that trail would connect the Nine Mile Creek Trail to the south side of I-494 in the Normandale Lakes area. So the cost to construct that segment is approximately $2.7 million, which would be Three Rivers Park District financial responsibility to do so. And to give you a quick background, as part of this master planning process, we did a pretty extensive amount of public engagement in your community. We did a lot of door-to-door time talking to business owners in the area that we studied. We spent many, many hours over several days talking to business owners in the area of Dewey Hill Road and Bush Lake Road as well as Cahill. And we also had a project website, we had an online survey, interactive map tools, and we did some social media posts and press releases. Overall, we had over 200 comments from the public during that process. And we also attended a job health fair at BI Worldwide, one of the larger employers in the area of our study, in which our project was very receptive. So in the, if you think about where the Nine Mile Creek Trail is located, from there down to I-494, we looked at three routes to get the regional trail through this area and connect to Highland Park Reserve eventually on the Minnesota River. And when we looked at those routes, we considered cost, funding potential, directness, public input, access to jobs. And we also looked at your current bike and pedestrian plan in terms of your sidewalks and future trails that you intend to construct in your city. And we took that in consideration as well when we were trying to figure out the best alignment. So this next slide shows the three sort of alignments we looked at. And we, based on the recommendations of our project management team, which includes staff from your city, Option C, which is the green line there in the middle, is what we are recommending as part of the master plan, be the alignment for the trail. And this is an image, if you look, I know it's a very busy image. This is your bicycle facilities, proposed bicycle facilities map. If you look in the bottom middle of that map, you'll see the purple, solid purple line and that would be the alignment that resulted from this study and master plan that would be the route lineup for the trail. And then here's another image of how it meshes in with your pedestrian facilities as well. So in closing, like I mentioned, right now, or like Andrew mentioned, we're in the, we're just wrapping up the 30-day public comment period and we're looking for resolutions of support from our partnering cities. So our intention is to come back later this month and ask for resolution of support for this master plan. And Segment B, which would be the segment of the trail north of the current Nine Mile Creek Regional Trail up to the Cedar Lake Regional Trail in St. Louis Park, we would kick off that master plan effort probably late summer of 2020 or early 2021 is our current plan. So with that, I will take any questions you may have?
Questions for Mr. McCullough? Member Fisher?
So I have a couple. So there are a few alignments through the Cahill area, and I know that came up a little bit when we were doing the Cahill Small Area Plan.
Correct.
So are you saying you've already determined based on public comment and input that the green is the preferred alignment?
Correct, yeah. We heard a lot of feedback, and I won't go into a lot of detail at this meeting because I know we don't have a lot of time. We heard a lot of people talk about they really liked the bike lanes on Cahill Road and they wanted those to stay. They didn't want those to go away. But we also heard a lot from the business community and employees in that business park that would really like to walk on their lunch breaks. We were kind of blown away with the comments of that, of how many people would, said they would like to walk out their front door and walk some sort of a loop in the industrial employment area over their lunch break. We actually talked to a number of people that, in this area, that actually get in their cars and they drive less than a mile down to Normandale Lakes, they park their car and they go walk. So by putting the regional trail in this area, it kind of serves both the east and the west side of our study area, it kind of cuts it down the middle and connects a lot of job centers and other retail businesses. So we also looked at your local plan and your future plans of building out your network and this route seemed to mesh with that the best.
Okay. Thank you.
Other questions at this point in time? Mr. McCullough? Were there any points with respect to the various segments of the route between Crystal and the Minnesota River where you have to have an interaction with CP rail line? Or anything running next to the rail line? Because that was one alignment that we looked at several years ago that...
Correct. That's to be determined. I think perhaps somewhere in the Crystal area, there might be some of that, especially with the future light rail project coming into that area as well. They all sort of come together. And so those areas north of Edina have not been explored in much detail yet. It's, we realize this is a general alignment along the rail line. It's not necessarily in the rail line, but we would look at all options during the study.
Good. Any other questions?
Just a quick one.
Member Staunton and then Member Brindl.
Just with respect to Segment B, have you, you know, I see the line there, is that just a general?
Correct. Look at this more of a corridor line or sort of a study area.
So you haven't done any work on what the precise location of Segment B might be along that?
We have not. That's the work I mentioned would kick off late 20, early 21.
Good. Member Brindl.
So just confirming that this is really preliminary and you're just informing us of a project that you hope comes to fruition in the future? Would that be accurate?
So this is, we are finishing up the master planning process and we've opened it up, the 30-day public comment period is closed. We had about 33 comments plus the city comments.
So, okay.
And, oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
No, go ahead. Finish.
My apology. So our intention is to finish the master plan submitted to the Met Council for Segment A through Edina and Bloomington. And that would be the final accepted alignment of the trail. And our intention is to apply for federal funding to construct that trail potentially in 2023, 24. That's our long-range plan for construction for Segment A, just the down the segment.
Yeah. So, thank you, and I apologize, I interrupted you. But, so we're finishing up a 30-day comment period. How did people find out about the 30-day comment period? Because I live kind of, I live in that quadrant of Edina and I hadn't heard about it.
So it was posted in various media, media sites, the Met Council posted it. We sent out through our various news agencies that do articles.
Okay.
I shared it with city staff.
I just missed it. Okay. All right. Okay, thank you.
The cities, I would like to add, the city still has time to provide comments if they wish. That's...
Understood. Yeah, there's a comment period, but we can still provide input.
We'd be glad to accept your comments.
So, I mean, it's a very exciting project to tie all of these trails together and connect trail to trail to trail and make all of this accessible. It's, I think in the whole system, it's hundreds of miles that's accessible because of this north-south route. So it really is exciting. So we'll, thank you for bringing it forward and I do look forward to watching this happen.
Thank you.
Member Anderson.
Thank you. There's a fair number of people who are, really want to know, how soon can we get on this trail? That's a promise. Based on your presentation, there will be a lot of people wondering about how a project like this gets financed. And without getting into too much detail, I wonder if you could just broad-brush that so that people who are watching in the room understand it?
Sure. So once we have the master plan, we can apply for some federal transportation dollars to construct this trail, similar to what we did on the Nine Mile Creek Trail. And so that's through the regional solicitation process with the Met Council, which you may be familiar with. That kicks off probably later this year or early 2020. We will be submitting an application for this project through Edina to construct that trail. And then if we're awarded the project, the construction would likely begin around 2023 or '24.
Do you feel comfortable in receiving the award?
I never feel 100% comfortable in getting those awards. The bike and pedestrian segment of that process is extremely competitive and usually has over 40 applicants, more than any other category, including some of the road categories. That being said, we have a lot of things working in our favor in regards to the employment center, that is, the employment center... center, that is, the employment centers that are around this area, and the population, as well as the connections that it makes and the barrier that it eliminates getting across 494. So I don't want to speak too positively, but I feel like I've filled out a lot of these applications, and I feel like it's going to be a pretty good one, in my opinion.
Good news. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any other questions. So the thing I was going to suggest, given the work session conversation we have with our park board, park commission, was maybe we can have them take a look at it. I know is from this nice little schedule we have in our diocese that they meet next Tuesday. So maybe we could get this in front of them, at least for some comments that could get back to the Three Rivers Park folks before they finalize that master plan.
Councilmember Staunton, I would be glad to come back and speak with...
Oh, that'd be great.
...any of your groups that you would like this information to be shared with.
Very good. I think they'd be very interested.
Yeah, thank you, Mr. McCullough.
And we'd be interested in their kind of feedback and analysis of how this fits into the bigger picture as well.
Okay. Thank you.
Very good. Thank you. Mr. Sipione can give you the details on the Park and Rec Commission meeting.
Okay.
Daytime.
Thank you, Mayor.
Okay, good. Thank you for being here this evening. And thank you for thinking of a north-south connection. It's one that we've been hoping for. All right, that concludes that portion of our agenda, and we're going to move on to the public hearing portion of the agenda. We've got, I think, seven public hearings this evening. And the first matter in front of us this evening is the potential issuance of a new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor license for O'Reilly Custom Four LLC DBA Red River Kitchen. And Manager Neal, you have this matter.
Thank you, Your Honor.
For introduction.
You may recall that in June of 2018, the council issued a liquor license to O'Reilly Custom Four LLC to operate as Red River Kitchen in the Breymar Clubhouse. In February of this year, they completed a sale of that business to Lancer Food Holdings LLC. And because it's a different owner, we required them to come back through our licensing system and update their license, essentially. And that's what we're doing here tonight. So this is not a new, we would consider this more an update, but it is a new license and does need to have a public hearing. They've gone through all the process of filling out the application, getting reviewed by the police department and also by the health department. And they have good reports in each of those areas. Staff recommends that you grant this license.
Good. Questions for Manager Neal? All right, this is a public hearing matter, our first public hearing matter this evening. I'm going to open the hearing up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to come forward and testify regarding this potential issuance of a on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor license to O'Reilly Custom Four LLC DBA Red River Kitchen? Hearing nothing and seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to close the public hearing discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Carried? And is there a motion to approve the new on-sale intoxicating and Sunday sale liquor license for O'Reilly Custom Four LLC DBA Red River Kitchen? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to approve the issuance of the described intoxicating liquor license to O'Reilly Custom Four. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Carried? And the next matter Director Milner has, which is also a public hearing matter with regard to a street assessment. Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. We're here to do a reassessment. So White Oaks Sea. Little background, we reconstructed those streets in 2016. The project was completed in 2016. In 2017, October, we had the final assessment hearing. And at that final assessment hearing, this council approved a special assessment of $24,858.85 per residential equivalent unit, and that was levied against 18 properties. Following that hearing, six of the 18 appealed the assessment at district court. And in February of this year, we received the conclusion of law from the court. This was a map of the reconstruction area in black, and the blue six properties are the ones that appealed the assessment. The findings of fact, the plaintiff's appraiser testified that there was zero market benefit from the project. The city's appraiser testified that there was $21,000 of benefit per REU using three separate methods. I'd like to make a note on that, that less than four years prior to the street reconstruction, we did a street patch. And the reason that assessment wasn't able to be justified to that full $24,858 is because we did that street patch. So without the street patch, the full assessment and the opinion of the appraiser would have been supported. So the court ordered, supported the special benefit of $21,000 per REU. And the court ordered the assessment set aside and remanded to the city for reassessment, and that's why we're here tonight. So the recommendation here in front of you tonight is to approve Resolution Number 2019-32. Within that resolution is an opportunity to approve the refund, or refund previous payments to those six properties. So two of them paid it in full, and four of them paid two of the 15-years assessment, and that number would be about $4,312.30. So we'd like to refund all previous payments and then reassess those six properties at that $21,000 per REU value. And I can stand for any questions.
Questions for Director Milner with regard to proposed Resolution 2019-32. Okay. Thank you. Stand by, please. I'm going to open this up for public testimony. Is there anyone who wishes to testify regarding this matter? All right, seeing no one coming forward, hearing nothing from the audience, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to close the public hearing discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Carried? Is there a motion to approve Resolution 2019-32, which is the White Oaks Sea Street Reconstruction Reassessment?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, on Resolution 2019-32, which is the Reconstruction Reassessment as described by Director Milner. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting the Resolution 2019-32 say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Carried? And then on to item C, which Director Milner also has, which is another public hearing matter regarding a public drainage and utility easement vacation on West 77th Street. Director Milner.
Thank you, Mayor, members of council. This is a request from the Pentagon Village South Development Team to vacate some easements that had recently been established last year. This is a map showing the green arrows where the easements were established prior to installation of the pipes. And during the installation last fall, those pipes had to be moved slightly. So they're just asking for the council to vacate those easements by the green arrows and reestablish new easements where the yellow arrows are. We have no issues with it. We're getting new easements where they need to be. Private utilities have no objections, and we recommend that you approve Resolution 2019-33 to vacate those easements, and we'd get those new easements from the developer. I can stand for any questions.
Okay. Questions for Director Milner at this point in time? All right. Stand by, Director Milner. Is there, I'm going to open this matter up for public testimony. This is now a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to come forward and testify regarding this Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing from the audience, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion, second, to close the public hearing discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Carried? Do we have a motion regarding Resolution 2019-33?
So moved.
Second.
Got a motion, second, to approve Resolution 2019-33, which vacates drainage and utility easements contingent on applicant providing new drainage and utility easements as shown by Director Milner. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adopting Resolution 2019-33 say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Carried? Next matter is another potential public drainage and utility easement vacation on Lincoln Drive. Director Milner.
Mayor, members of council, this is a very similar request to a development project. The applicant's requesting to vacate some easements embodied in Resolution 2019-34. Again, the green arrow is where it was before they installed the pipe. They had some issues in the field. They moved the pipe over to the yellow, so they're asking that you vacate easements pointed to at the green arrow, and they'll establish new ones where the yellow arrow is. We have no issues. Again, new easements are being created where we need them. Private utilities have no objections, and we would recommend you approve Resolution 2019-34 to vacate those easements contingent on gaining new easements. I can stand for any questions.
All right. Thank you. Questions for Director Milner? All right, stand by. Opening up this matter for public hearing, for public testimony, is there anyone that wishes to come forward and inquire or testify regarding the adoption, proposed adoption of Resolution 2019-34, which would vacate drainage and utility easements at 5901 Lincoln Drive?
So moved.
So we've seen no one coming forward. Is there a motion to close the public hearing? We had a motion?
So moved.
Second.
We had a motion, second, to close the public hearing?
Second.
Discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Carried? Is there a motion?
So moved.
There's a motion to adopt Resolution 2019-34.
Sorry, now I got you off.
No, we're good. Any further discussion with regard to motion or Resolution 2019-34 to vacate the drainage and utility easements at 5901 Lincoln Drive? If not, all those in favor of adopting the resolution, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Carried? And then we have, thank you, Director Milner, thank you for your good work. And now Director Teague, welcome. And you've got a self-storage facility that is in for a site plan review.
Yes, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. This property is located on the border of Eden Prairie, down off Washington Avenue, just north of 494. It's an existing office industrial building. Property is zoned industrial. What the applicant is proposing here is to expand the existing building, it's about 7,000 square feet, to a 113,000-square-foot mini-storage facility. Existing building is brick. They are proposing to match that existing surface and paint it white, as indicated on the screen. So this site plan review is a code-compliant project. We don't get too many of those here in Edina, so this is rare. It complies with all of our setback standards, height, building size, parking stalls, drive aisle width. Again, code-compliant. The addition would be off of the front, as indicated in gray. The way the operation works is users would drive into the facility, park, go and load their belongings within the building. They would then proceed out and go out onto Washington Avenue. Again, the landscaping is all code-compliant in terms of existing and proposed landscaping. The building would be open from 6:00 a.m. to 10:00 p.m. daily. Office hours would be Monday through Friday, and there would be Saturday office hours as well. It is a permitted use. The traffic that's generated here is actually less than the previous use. There is an adequate parking proposed, actually quite a bit over. One thing I do want to mention, I thought it was in here. Our bike facilities plan shows a sidewalk along Washington Avenue on the east side. There's no sidewalk there today, but we need to start somewhere. So the applicant is willing to put in the sidewalk, basically be a sidewalk to nowhere, but as properties expand or redevelop, we would hope to continue and complete that sidewalk connection. The applicant is agreeable to put that sidewalk in now. This went before our planning commission, and they unanimously recommended approval of the site plan, and so does staff. So with that, I can stand for any questions you may have.
Questions for Director Teague?
I have one. Member Fisher? Carrie, you said the traffic would be less with the addition. How can that be? Isn't it expanding an existing use, the same use, just more of it?
Oh, the existing use on the site was an office, kind of a light office use. So comparing that use to mini-storage, the traffic will be less.
Oh, I misunderstood that in the packet. I thought it was already mini-storage and was being expanded. Got it. All right.
Good. Other questions for Director Teague at this point in time? Director Teague, is the applicant here?
They are here.
All right. And did you indicate to them how much time they'd have to make a presentation?
I believe they took five, 10 minutes at planning commission.
All right, let's welcome them up. Good evening, gentlemen.
Good evening, Mr. Mayor, councilmembers. Greg Hayes, Evert Construction, A&amp;R Investments is our development entity for this project and working with Mohegan Hands and Architects. I have Todd Mohegan here on any architectural design questions. As Mr. Teague said, we are code-compliant. We think it's a nice reuse of the building. We will be going forward with the Nine Mile Creek Watershed District after council approval, which is a procedure in the order of go to look at integrating some more green space as we can and some infiltration runoff on the south to the Nine Mile Creek. We've met with Nine Mile Creek Watershed and connected with them last week again. They acknowledged the planning commission approval and are anxious for us to come in. So from a standpoint, it's a high-quality building, attractive, long-lasting, reduce traffic, and we get your first link of the sidewalk system in, which we're happy to do. So I'm happy to answer any specific questions.
Good. Yes, thank you, Mr. Hayes. Questions for Mr. Hayes at this point in time? Many of us watched your presentation at the planning commission, so...
Thank you.
It's good. All right. Anybody else in your team wish to make any comments?
No, I just have, if there was architectural design questions, Mr. Mohegan could answer if there were any specific to the building.
Okay. I don't know if Mr. Mohegan has any comments that he wants to make. Unsolicited? No? Okay. Wisely refraining?
Okay. Thank you.
All right. This is a public hearing matter. I'm going to open this up for public testimony. Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to testify regarding this matter of a proposed approval of the site plan for this particular location? All right. Hearing nothing, seeing no one coming forward, is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. Got a motion, second, to close the public hearing regarding this site plan review matter for 7725 Washington Avenue? Any further discussion? All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Carried? And this is also embodied in a resolution, Resolution 2019-35, if approved, would bless the site plan at 7725 Washington Avenue as a self-storage facility. Is there anyone who wishes to make that motion on the council?
So moved.
Second.
We've got a motion, second, to approve Resolution 2019-35, which would approve the site plan at 7725 Washington Avenue for a self-storage facility. Any further discussion? All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Posed? Carried? That concludes that matter. Yes, thank you, Mr. Mohegan and Mr. Hayes. All right, and now we have a restoration hardware-related matter, and Emily Bodicker has this particular public hearing. Ms. Bodicker?
Yes, thank you, Mayor and City Council. Tonight Restoration Hardware is proposing rooftop dining at the building currently under construction at 6801 France Avenue. 6801 France Avenue is zoned PCD III and is guided as community activity center. A site plan for Restoration Hardware that's currently under construction was approved by City Council in 2017. The project was then reviewed administratively after approval due to the fact that the project changed from four stories down to three stories. The top floor of the building that's currently under construction includes kitchen space, pantry, wine bar, café, outdoor terrace space, and outdoor dining. There would be no change in access or traffic to the site with the addition of the rooftop dining, and no additional traffic or parking needs would be generated with this update to the development due to the fact that the restaurant was always planned within the building itself. As you know, city code requires rooftop restaurants to meet certain criteria when required with a conditional use permit. That includes hours of operation, amplified sound. The rooftop area should be kept in a clean and orderly manner. The rooftop restaurant should be adequately screened. A liquor license would be required. Fencing or guard would be required that meets Minnesota State Building Code, and lighting shall be permitted that it illuminates the designated area only. Staff believes that those criteria are met. The application indicates that the rooftop will be open from Monday through Saturday, 10:00 a.m. to 9:00 p.m., and Sunday from 11:00 a.m. to 6:00 p.m. There isn't any residential property within close proximity to the proposed rooftop restaurant. Single-family housing is located approximately 650 feet to the west of this property behind the office and commercial developments on the west side of France. On April 24th, the planning commission held a public hearing, and the topic of restaurant odor came up through the public hearing, or at the public hearing. And staff looked into this a little bit and believes that this concern would be a citywide issue and not something that would be addressed within individual conditional use permits. Oftentimes in this area, restaurants are permitted by use, and a conditional use permit would be the only thing that would make a restaurant come forward to the City Council for a rooftop dining application. So with that, tonight, staff recommends that the City Council approve the conditional use permit for rooftop dining at Restoration Hardware, 6801 France Avenue South, and approval is based on the conditions and findings listed in the staff report. That I stand very well.
Questions for Ms. Bodicker? I think we, in the last six months or so, six, eight months, we approved rooftop dining for.
Yes, at Lifetime Fitness.
Lifetime Fitness. Same issues?
Yep, very similar.
Okay.
There was an existing project, and then rooftop dining was added.
Okay, good. Other questions for Ms. Bodicker at this point in time? All right, stand by, please.
Yep.
And this is, again, a public hearing matter. Is there anyone in the audience that wishes to address the council with respect to this proposed issuance of a conditional use permit to RH for rooftop dining?
Good morning, good evening, Mayor Hovland.
You've been here sometimes in the morning, I think.
City council members, yes, I have.
Yeah, in the wee hours.
I confess, I'm the one that brought up the odor concern. I like Restoration Hardware design. I thought it was great, just three stories. I think they're being very respectful. It doesn't loom over the neighborhood. But odors in my neighborhood is a concern. There are mornings when I can go out and the odor of garlic just seeps into the neighborhood. Other times, it's the greasy food smell, which will kind of make you gag. I can remember a week ago, it was a beautiful day, and I thought, I'm going to go out in my backyard and read. Went to the backyard, and greasy food smell. I went back in the house. It was a little bit too much. You know, the folks that worked on the Greater Southdale District Plan put in hundreds of hours into that plan, and they wanted to make our neighborhood a livable, walkable place. But when the whole neighborhood reeks of garlic or greasy food smell, it's not fun to be outside. This, as Emily said, this is something that does have to be addressed throughout the city. I was heading to work, I work over in the Jerry's Tower, went right past City Hall and was met by the odor of garlic. And I thought, well, that can't be coming from City Hall. It's got to be coming from one of the restaurants. You know, the city of Ridgefield has such an ordinance, and I really think that Edina needs to step up and do that. If we're growing, if we're adding residential areas and putting restaurants in close proximity, you know, we've got to deal with it. The technology is there, we just need to get it done. Thank you.
Thank you. Ms. Davis? Is anyone else that wishes to testify with regard to the proposed issuance of a conditional use permit to Restoration Hardware for rooftop dining? Seeing no one coming forward and hearing nothing, I'm going to ask if there's a motion to close the public hearing. So is there a second?
Second.
Got a motion, a second to close the public hearing with regard to the Resolution 2019, 2019-36 matter, which is a potential conditional use permit issuance for Restoration Hardware for rooftop dining. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And now, Director Teague, I know this issue came up at the planning commission, and someone suggested we need to deal with this on a citywide basis. I think we did have a retrofit, as I recall, at McCormick and Schmick that occurred as a result of some of the condominium owners in the upper floors of the west and being concerned about it. And I can actually remember when the 5000 France building was built with those condominiums up there, that Salute was also going to be coming into existence at 50th and France, and the proximity of those condominiums to, you know, within 50 feet created some issue there. And I seem to recall that we were able to convince Salute that they should put some kind of equipment in place that would take care of that odor. So I'm wondering what, but you say there's nothing from an ordinance standpoint. I'm wondering how we accomplish that, then, on it, on it, Salute?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. We checked in with our health department, and they did have a record of some complaints being made from Salute, and they, their staff was tracking whether they could smell certain, you know, odors coming from the restaurant. But there was no record of actually them doing something specific about it.
Okay.
We did research some other ordinances to see if there's some specific language that other cities have put into their codes, but it really just talks about submitting something as part of a project that's adjacent to residential, a restaurant going in that's adjacent to residential.
To residential, as opposed to, what, 600, 700 feet here?
Correct.
Okay. Mayor Neil?
Mr. Mayor, you asked, the last part of your question was, how can we accomplish that if we don't have ordinance to do it? We can do, we can, we can accomplish some of these things without compelling people to do it, just by asking them if they will. That sounds simple, but we have a pretty good restaurant community in this community, and Restoration Hardware wants to be a good neighbor. We will sit down with them and work through sort of what their health and building code needs are, and we, I think we can accomplish something without having the ordinance to compel them to do it.
All right, thank you. Member Brindle?
Thank you. I'm looking at ordinance section 36-644, special requirements. And as I scroll down here, it's section five and restrictions, controls, and design standards, uses which, because of the nature of their operation, are accompanied by an excess of noise, vibration, dust, dirt, smoke, odor, noxious gases, glare, or wastes. So I guess I would ask, what that provides us? Does that provide us any level of protection?
Well, normally, those kind of provisions you're going to find in industrial situations, and then you would have noise that reaches a certain level of decibels that we can regulate because we can measure that.
Right.
Odor is a more difficult thing to monitor and to measure and to regulate.
Okay.
There are certain kinds of odors, like those produced in an industrial setting, or those produced in a wastewater treatment facility, for example, that are able to be specifically identified and mitigated, but food or garlic, as Ms. Davis noticed, would be difficult to do.
Sure. Well, and I relayed to you recently that when, before our public worksite moved to its new site, it was ConAgra or Golden Valley Microwave. So we knew what kind of popcorn they were making. It was this flavor or that flavor. It was all in the air. So it is, it's an issue, and we live much farther from the area than Nora does from the new RH. So understood, thanks.
But again, we can work with them closely just to.
Great. That'd be terrific.
Member Fisher?
So I think you have to separate this a little bit. This conditional use permit is for a restaurant, or rooftop dining. And actually, rooftop dining is not going to create any odor, you know, because that's, what's creating odor is a kitchen, which is already approved, a restaurant, which is already approved. So it's the stack where the exhaust, the grill stuff is coming from. Now, so for this particular conditional use permit, I feel like, you know, it's going to be food that's being carried on a waiter's tray. It's not going to be an issue. I do think there's a compelling reason to think about what we might do citywide moving into the future, and it might be worth having, I don't know which commission could do a little study of this, but other communities must have something. And, because the point is a good point, that the more we have housing on top of restaurants or restaurants near housing, these are issues that will only grow. And there's technology that solves this, and I speak from experience. My office is the floor above a restaurant. Our intake air is 30 feet from their kitchen exhaust. So on the right mornings, at about 7:30 in the morning, that smell of hamburger grease is not cool. But it can be, you know, we fixed it. It's filtering, it's a lot of different things. I think having an ordinance in place that sort of covers it, because as much as I appreciate that we do have a good restaurant community, having a standard, I think, is going to be really important, yeah, moving into the future.
Yep, good thought. All right, would you, Member Fisher, care to move this matter, move Resolution 2019-36 which would approve a conditional use permit for Restoration Hardware to maintain rooftop dining at their building at 6801 France Avenue South?
Yeah, I'll move approval.
All right, is there a second?
Second.
Any further discussion? All those in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried. And now we are moving on to the comprehensive plan update, that portion of the public hearing. We've got a couple of our planning commissioners here, Chair and Joanne Olson and Planning Commissioner Todd Thorson. I don't know if Director Teague, you're going to introduce this matter, but I just wanted to let folks know in the audience that here, where everything is electronic now. But when I work on these things, I like to do it the old-fashioned way. I'm kind of a tactile guy. So here's our, here's the comprehensive plan in paper form so far. This is just a draft, and you should all know that it's just a draft, and we're going to take some public testimony this evening on this proposed draft. But there's going to be another chance at a public hearing when we get to the point where we decide that we're going to send something that we're comfortable sending to our neighbors to have them review it, and then they'll have six months to review it. So has Bloomington, Ridgefield, St. Louis Park, Minneapolis, Eden Prairie, Minnetonka, all have a chance to weigh in on it. And then we'll all be looking at it in that gap period, too, and you can continue to dialogue with us, because we aren't going to approve this on a final version basis until at least, you know, probably seven months from now. So it's not, this is, let me make this clear, this is not intended, what you're hearing tonight, to be a final plan. This is just one step in the iterative process along the way. And we will indeed have another public hearing on the next iteration of it when we get done incorporating people's comments and, and working on this further. So with that having been said, Director Teague, did you want any introductory remarks or Ms. Olson and Mr. Thorson, welcome. These are two of our fellow residents that serve on the planning commission, that represent all of our interests. So thank you for being here this evening.
Thank you, Mayor and council. So again, Joanne Olson and Todd Thorson, the tag team for presenting this. We're really excited to be here, because it's been a long process, but it's also just been a really, just enlightening, and just, it's just been a wonderful process, working with all the groups, with the residents, other commissions, and working with you, too, throughout this process. So it's been very good. So we're happy to be here. So just real quickly, the, over the presentation tonight, we're just going to talk a little bit about the Metropolitan Council Regional Planning Process. Then we're going to talk in more detail about the Edina Comprehensive Plan Update Process, including the Big Ideas Workshop, the Small Area Plans, and the update of the Comprehensive Plan. We also have a section on population forecast that Todd's going to cover, land use guide changes. Then we'll also kind of discuss the public meetings, public input, working with that better together. And then we'll review the Comprehensive Plan schedule. And also, we just, we do have other members of the planning commission here tonight, and we have our consultants, and I'm, where is everybody? There you go. And it looks like we also have other members of commissions here. Is that, are you guys here for this? I noticed a few. So that's excellent, because they played a huge role in this, too, so. So just quickly to kind of go through the process, it all started in 2015 with the Vision Edina, and then we really started working on the Comprehensive Plan Update in 2017 with the Big Ideas Workshop. And then we moved into the Small Area and District Planning, and again, that included all the working groups, and moved right into the Comprehensive Plan Update where we are today. So it's just been a real cohesive and inclusive process, and pretty excited where we're at. So just real quickly, what is the Edina Comprehensive Plan? It's going to be used as, designed as a framework for guiding future development, redevelopment, and community enhancement. We are going to be using it to shape Edina's collective future growth, to protect what Edina values, and to create an even more attractive and sustainable idea. So again, it's a framework to allow us to review the proposals that are coming before us to be able to make the right decisions. Again, with the step one, the Big Ideas Workshop, the reason to do that was to kind of just, kind of regroup and see where we are, and before we really kicked off the Comprehensive Plan. So we had two meetings, two workshops, April 19th and April 22nd in 2017. And as part of that, we bridged the Vision Edina into what we should be doing with a Comprehensive Plan. So we discussed the current relevance, and then we also discovered new ideas. So it was this whole process, just again, to kind of make sure that we don't forget what we've already done, and make sure that we carry it through the whole process. Another big piece of the Comprehensive Plan was the Small Area Plans. So as part of the last, the 2008 Comprehensive Plan, it was identified for areas of potential growth. And so that's what we focused on this time, were those areas, to really come up with specific plans that guide, guided the development of those areas. So we had 44th and France, 50th and France, Wooddale and Valley View, 70th and Cahill, and then the Greater Southdale area were part of those. And so all of those plans involved residents who worked and put lots of hours towards it. And then they had representatives from the planning commission to work on each of those small area plans. They really focused on community livability, connectivity, walkability, also looked at density of development, traffic, height, respecting the adjacent neighborhoods, looking at transit use, bicycle use, linkages, and connections. All of the small area plans have gone through the public hearing process with both the planning commission and the council. They've all been approved by the city council. So those are what you, Mayor Hovland, held up, was a lot of that are part of those small area plans that are in there. They're all included, and they also include the residential density ranges. The step three of the Comprehensive Plan are all the other chapters. So again, that's where we worked closely, all of the other commissions that had the chapters. They reviewed them and presented what they would like to see and rewrote them. So that was, again, a really excellent process to go through. Just to start, the Comprehensive Plans, we have to meet Met Council requirements. So the following chapters are required: land use, housing, water resources, transportation, parks and trail, implementation, economic competitiveness, and resilience. And then in addition to those requirements, Edina has identified six additional priorities: arts and culture, heritage preservation, energy and environment, health, human rights, community services, and facilities. So again, what we did with the Comprehensive Plan Update was the commissions and the city departments reviewed and updated and developed the chapter content. We also had a 30-day comment period, and then the planning commission was, is making that recommendation now to the city council. So I'm going to turn it over to talk a little bit about the region and population.
Well, good evening. First off, let me just say, I'm flattered that I get to talk about the comp plan, because, you know, I'm a land use guy, I like that. But when you go through the other chapters, the chapters from the commissions that I don't really deal with, it's overwhelming to me, the amount of energy and effort by this community that went into this plan. And while some of it touches directly on land use, and just the overwhelming weight of how much people care and their passion for making this city better, it just is overwhelming. that people actually let me talk about it publicly, because my wife won't let me talk about it, so. So as you know, the Met Council is the regional planning body for the metro area. They are concerned with two things primarily: transportation and sewage water use. And Edina plays in that. We are in the middle of the metro area, which is, I think, kind of where we think we should be. But we need to think of things in that context. Edina does not operate in isolation, so certainly the six-month comment period is acknowledgement of that, that what we do affects our neighbors and what they do also affects us. But, so our comp plan is really the acknowledgement, as Joanne said, that it gives us the framework, the roadmap, as we go forward and see redevelopment. Because we're in somewhat of a unique economic state within the state of Minnesota, where we're seeing redevelopment. I think traditionally, when you think about the Met Council and their activities and where they've been very strong advocates, it's been in the new development. It's been on the fridges, the suburbs, Lake Elmo. But now we're being asked to kind of adopt that framework in a renewal, in a redeveloping environment, and that is a challenge for us, and we believe this plan helps address those challenges. And I'm going to, I will screw it up, the page changes every time. There's a lot, as Mayor Hovland indicated, there's a lot to this plan. So trying to take it as far away from the small area plans and the details as possible, there is a lot of talk about forecasts and what do forecasts mean. The Met Council provides us a forecast, and they are long-range projections of growth. How many people are net going to move into Edina? They're based on regional macroeconomic, demographic, and market assumptions. They are models, they project out to 2040. So I guess, you know, but they are there. And unfortunately or fortunately, we have to meet those expectations. Those numbers provided to us by Metropolitan Council have to be supported by our plan. That ensures that we're aligned with Met Council and are well as our neighbors in terms of where the population is developing and growing. But having said that, they're not used as penalties or incentives. We don't get bonus credit with Met Council if we have more people. We don't get penalized if we have less people. Really, it is designed to be, you know, to make sure everyone involved is, has a level playing field to understand what's going on. And periodically, more frequently than not, Metropolitan Council does adjust their forecasts. The most recent published one came out in December of 2018. That is available on their website. There is another version that has come out that has not been publicly approved or not been approved by the Met Council, and those numbers are actually reflected in our comp plan, and that is, you know, that is one of the concerns. So as we, as you think about, sorry, I'm going to dive a little bit into the, into population forecasting. Edina, as I said, is just a part of the larger metropolitan area. And as you look at the published population estimates for the metropolitan area, Edina is actually less than the metropolitan area and less than the growth in Hennepin County. So we are growing, as is the entire metropolitan area, and we are not growing any faster or are predicted to grow any faster than our neighbors or the area that surrounds us. I think that's a fact. You can also go look at the state of Minnesota also provides demographic data, and they have a completely different process than the Met Council, which they only provide at the county and metro area. They do not provide city data. Their estimate of what the population in Hennepin County will be in 2040 is 80,000 citizens different than the Met Council. So you have two major demographic studies indicating about the same level of growth in 2040 in the metropolitan area and in Hennepin County. So we are growing, and it's similar to what our neighbors are growing at. And I think that's a reasonable set of expectations on which to build a comp plan. So what are the impacts of the actual forecast? How do they matter to a comprehensive plan? Changing that forecast, which is really just one or two tables inside the entire comp plan, really has no direct effect on how land use is accomplished and developed inside Edina. It's just an indication of what is going to happen. And I think, you know, specifically in the light of looking at the small area plans, where we've identified these areas of change, we have very detailed expectations and guidelines as to what is going to happen. Those smaller plans have already been approved by the Council, and whether that forecast changes now or in two years or in four years really is not going to have an impact on the comprehensive plan because the tools and the frameworks are already in place. Because this is a governmental process that involves the Met Council, there are some potential downsides to, you know, reducing or advocating that we should reduce our forecasted population. One, regional funding is based extensively on those forecasts. And two, transit is heavily governed by what they expect and the number of people they expect living in any area. So if we were to try and get the Met Council to reduce our forecasts, that could impact all the transit dollars and opportunities that are coming to Edina. So how does this really translate into Edina? For the uninitiated, the metro has divided into 1,700 traffic analysis zones, which splits cities into smaller nodes. Edina has 44 of those. In our comp plan, based on the Met Council estimates and their modeling, all the traffic or, excuse me, all the population changes will be occurring in the previously identified area, small area plan, areas that were singled out in 2008 as areas of potential change. The numbers there that are highlighted are actually the TAS numbers, not the actual population changes. But as you can see, it's 44th and France, Grandview, South Dale, and 70th and Cahill is where we expect, and that's where we are planning for the growth to occur. If you look on that, only 7% of Edina's land area is forecasted for population increases, while the remaining 93% will essentially stay the same or go down. And then if you dive very specifically into the zoning and the density guidelines, you can see here that 7% of Edina has been guided for increased density, all of which is in the South Dale District. 93% remain guided for no change in density or experience a decrease. And again, these are suggested ranges. This doesn't mean we'll, we'll take, we intend to take the entire office acres of 63 and, you know, or, excuse me, take, you know, that's the max, that's for the whole area. We do not intend to force that many housing units. There's no mechanism to enforce that many units into a particular property. That's just the guidelines when projects get presented into the city. Now I'm going to switch gears here. I'm actually going to cover MJ's material, so I can't quite do it with the same level of passion as MJ, but I will do my best. This has been a long process, and there's been many opportunities for community members to be involved. We've had 178 public meetings between Planning Commission, between the small area plans, the task force work sessions, the big idea workshops, the overwhelming just the number of meetings we've had between February 27 and May of this year. Those include those hearings that have been taking place between, in the Planning Commission and the City Council. And then the comprehensive plan, we had a formal 30-day window for public review utilizing the Better Together Edina website. We had 1,500 visitors. Most visitors in one day was 185. There was 27 frequently asked questions. Seven people submitted nine questions for question and answer. 27 people submitted 105 comments, and I think the downloaded number of documents was 106, number of documents.
So again, just to add to that, so that was through that Better Together Edina. I think that's what they're using for 58th Street, is that right? Right, so the same thing. So it was really a very successful way to reach out to everybody.
And because it's web-enabled, we can get, we have a wonderful array of statistics. You can see that the spikes around announcements, but we had 1,000 aware visitors, 253 informed visitors, and 31 visitors that engaged directly, you know, extensively into the website. I'm going to skip this slide because this is MJ's.
Very detailed. It went direct social and government sites, yeah. So it was successful.
So what did all this accomplish? I think, one, we had, we believe we had higher degree of awareness, and I think overall than past plans, of very strong engagement foundations. We had a high number of registrations that registered for the website for the comp plan purposes that are now also available for other projects to come along. I think we had a very robust communication program and provided, you know, a significant degree of information to citizens.
Great. So just kind of to start to summarize this, then, so what we've been doing with those comments, and we'll do the same as we receive comments from the Council and from the surrounding communities. We have set up a matrix where we can record whether or not we would require a change or a potential change or no change. So we're keeping all these documents. It's a big spreadsheet that's documenting every comment that we've received, and then our review of those comments, and then what action we're going to be taking. So there is going to be a summary document that shows all that. So everything's being reviewed, considered, and action taken on it. Just to date, we have had 95 comments, and 50 of those have resulted in changes or improvements to the draft plan. The amendments are for the, were made for the Planning Commission consideration. And then this full report is available on Better Together Edina. And is that correct? Is that up there now, Bill, or is that updated? Okay, correct. Just to kind of go through that schedule, this shows where we've started, you know, the process that we've been going through, and there's been a lot of open house, Planning Commission meetings, Council. So we are now at the May 7 City Council Public Hearing meeting. This is when we will be then initiating the six-month municipal review process through October. Once that's done, we are going to then have that final approval at the Planning Commission. That will be in November 2019. And then as the mayor mentioned, it will be back in front of the City Council in December. We will be then sending it to Met Council by December 31st in 2019. Again, this couldn't have happened without just an extensive amount of support from residents and businesses and the commissions and the small area plan, working groups, City Council, and staff. And with that, we're just going to open it up for questions. And again, we have lots of resources, so we're not going to be the ones with all the answers, so, but we're happy to open up for questions.
Yeah. Questions for either of the commissioners at this point in time? Deborah Rindell, did you have?
No.
Okay.
No, I'm good.
Back to the forecasting issue, as I try to understand it, you know, from being on the tab over there, what I see the Met Council trying to do is estimate the region's needs from an infrastructure standpoint, and you alluded to it early on in your presentation, Commissioner Thorson, that you're looking at transportation, infrastructure, and also impact on the sewage system. And so when they use their demographers to come up with forecasting, they're doing it for the purpose of kind of thinking about the worst-case scenario where if this happens, we need to make sure that as a region, we're prepared to handle this from an infrastructure standpoint, with those two areas of primary emphasis: transportation system, infrastructure, and what's under the street to be able to handle the sewage with the metropolitan system. Is that a, is that a fair way to look at that forecasting? Because I know it's caused a lot of consternation in our, in our community, and I think for us, too, because we sit here and think, no, we're not going to go that much. We have grown some.
I think in their DNA that that's what really drives Met Council. I mean, that's what they're known for, transportation and the water use. And I think, as you know, we've even seen Edina with what we saw in, on the west side of Highway 100 in that Office Park is, you know, these are sewers and infrastructure is a long-term decision. So they are definitely concerned about making sure they have the right resources, the right infrastructure in place for this change, and they don't want to be surprised.
And just because they predict something doesn't mean we have to fulfill that prediction.
There's no, as I said, there's no penalty for it. And I do think it's somewhat interesting, as a relatively quantitative person, that they can make such very accurate predictions out to 2040 to like a single, like 407, you know, people. I find it just interesting. But yes, there is no penalty. And I, you know, I think that, you know, you have to, as I said, this is kind of somewhat of a new phenomenon, I think, that we're, how redevelopment plays into this. And I think that's why you're seeing the second, this next pass of revisions on the estimates come through, which they have not released, so we don't really know who else they've revised their forecast of. But I think they're starting to contemplate what that looks like and how that impacts. And that, and to be the, you know, we are taking a very different view in Edina about how we're accommodating growth and population versus Minneapolis. We've concentrated in those areas of change, whereas Minneapolis has adopted a different view, which is more what they call the upzoning, which is allowing triplexes, you know, in typically R1 areas. So we've, this plan really maintains those R1 areas in the very, you know, heart of Edina, but also accommodates some growth in the areas where it is most, you know, where it's most reasonable.
All right. And so put another way, I think, is that we still have the right to approve or disapprove projects that come into us, and it has no relationship at all to whatever forecasting they're engaged in, in terms of making sure they can accommodate regional infrastructure needs. Because I think we all recognize that, I think we're one of the only northern metropolitan areas that's predicted to have any increase in population by 2040. So as you pointed out earlier, there will be people coming to the region, and they'll be coming to different places, and I suppose we'll get some. But we don't have to approve every project that comes in, and we don't. So, okay, those are kind of the things I wanted to cover with you from a forecasting standpoint. And then with respect to densities, those are already established, is what I saw you in your presentation, that those are in the small area plans, and those have all been approved. So those densities are in there. We can, although we could change those by amendment at a subsequent time, too, if we saw areas where we thought the density modeling was off. Those still, those can be changed by amendment.
Absolutely.
And those are comp plans, so there still is, generally, most of the projects will have to be rezoned anyway. So we still hold, the Council still holds that mechanism that we're going to need to rezone most of the big redevelopment projects.
So you mentioned that there were 178-some meetings or 177-some meetings where the public was included, and I know one of the emails I saw was that folks wanted to support a vision that was supported by the residents. So how many residents do you think we've engaged in this process of having 170-some public meetings?
Well, I would say a lot, because, you know, each of the, like, small area plans, the groups, they always are open to the public, too, and we always provide a time for them to speak. So I know for the Greater Southdale, there was always residents there, and they always had the opportunity to speak. Same with the work sessions, and so I think that they've had lots of opportunities.
Just, I think at least 35 residents were on the small area plans outside of the Planning Commission. Then you start adding in the commissions, and, you know, it's, it's over 100 residents were directly involved in, you know, some aspect of this, of the comprehensive plan.
Okay. Does that prompt any other questions from Council members? Member Anderson?
I just have one, really. The mayor brought up the question of density, and so I'm wondering, was there ever a computation done that would show at density, at maximum density, considering all land uses, that there could be, how many units would you think that that would generate? Was that ever considered? I've seen some crazy numbers floating around. That's the reason I ask.
I think you could take any number, you know, and divide it and assume that you're going to repurpose and redevelop every acre. It would be astron, I think you could, I have, we've not officially done any calculations, but I can, I could see that number, if you made the assumptions, being astronomical.
Yeah, okay.
Like, the entire population of Minnesota or the Midwest could be accommodated in Edina.
Okay. Because I've seen, well, as I say, I've seen some variance, large, very large numbers that I think get people's attention, and that's generated a lot of comment.
And I think, Carrie, correct me if I'm wrong, but this slide is also shows where we, you know, the density has changed, the units per acre. And again, those are all within that Greater Southdale. And then we also had one area that actually reduced the density. Otherwise, the, it has not changed.
Member Fisher?
I'm just curious, as long as both of you are up there, and maybe Carrie can answer this as well, have any members of the City Council told you what the population should be? Any Edina?
Not, not me.
I've never had that conversation with anybody.
Okay. I just want to be clear, because that's also out there quite a bit, so.
And neither have I.
Okay, thanks.
Couple of questions for Carrie. So following up, the mayor mentioned at the beginning, the draft nature of the report. So what we're being asked tonight is for authority to share So, what we're being asked tonight is for authority to share this with our neighbors. And so, there's, the neighbors then have six months to get back to us. And as I understand it, since they're busy working on their own comprehensive plans, chances are, they're not going to get back to us, and then the six months expires, and then we can move on. But we have an opportunity to continue to work on it between now and the end of that six-month period, right?
That is correct.
And then, at the end of that six-month period, so sometime near the end of this year, we would take a final action on whatever product we have at that point that could, that will then be sent to the Metropolitan Council for them to digest in whatever way they do, right?
That's correct. The intent is to have a public hearing, both at the Planning Commission and then at City Council.
Okay. So, in terms of, let's say we get, when we get to that place, and we have, you know, whatever we've got in the, in the program, does that mean somebody can come in with a development right after we approve the plan that has to be granted? I mean, our zoning code will still be in place, and we'll still have, we'll still have to work on our zoning code after that, right?
Yeah, from the date that the Met Council approves the plan, we have nine months to bring our zoning ordinance into compliance with the comprehensive plan.
So, one of the implementation steps here, after we have the new comp plan approved, is for us to go through our zoning code and make changes that bring it into conformance with this new comprehensive plan.
Correct. That would be areas that are, where the zoning is inconsistent with the comprehensive plan. There's a number of recommendations for, you know, code changes, those kind of things. We're not under a timeframe to complete those in nine months. It's just items that, where the zoning and the comp plan are in conflict.
Right. So, if our, you know, our zoning limited something that was permitted as a use in the new comp plan, we'd have to change the zoning to permit that use in that place.
Correct.
Okay. And so, I know some folks are concerned that at the minute we approve the plan, that that throws the doors wide open, we don't have any controls anymore. In fact, we still have our zoning code in place, probably for over another year, the existing zoning code would be in place.
That's correct.
Okay. Thank you.
You know, as clarification on that, when talking about bringing zoning into compliance with what's in the updated comprehensive plan, it just occurred, it occurred to me to take that a step further and make, and give you an example. An example would be a mixed-use area in, in, let's say, in one of the small area plans. What is a single use today of commercial-industrial could be a mixed-use that would allow retail and housing, that kind. That's, that's an example of bringing the zoning into compliance with the new comprehensive plan. I just thought that might help.
Good. I also wanted to compliment the group. One of the things that, yeah, for the hard work, of course, but one of the things I really like, and we do this over at the tab on the Transportation Policy Plan, when it gets released to the public, the comments that come back in get appended to the back. And I like that. And I like seeing that there was an open-mindedness that with respect to these, I think you said 95 comments that came back, and that information was clear in one of the appendices. And then, you had like 50 of those suggestions that came in from residents that got incorporated into the, into the current draft of the comprehensive plan. So, there's no end to good ideas, is what I'm thinking, in that as we go through this next phase, it'll be a continuation of the same sort of thing that we've been seeing, and you'll be adding these statements to the back and adding these comments and reviewing them and changing accordingly, or making recommendations for changes in a draft that we'll eventually have to deal with when we do pass the plan.
Right. Yeah, that's a good point. We received some excellent comments, and some of them did lead into like, you know, further research, you know, upcoming plans, and it was, they were really good comments.
Yeah. So, and then, again, just thank you for all your hard work, your diligence in serving, you know, not only this council, but everybody else in our community as well, as we work our way towards something here. So, we're going to open this up for public testimony now. I'm sure folks have been, you know, eager to talk. And I think this is an important, another important part of the process here. So, I tend to think once in a while about Peter Brosius, who is a member of our community who runs a children's theater, and he, you'll often hear him talk about theater and democracy had the same point of origin. And they both have the same ideal in mind, and that is that all voices should be heard and all voices matter. So, with that goal in mind, let's, let's start hearing from some of our residents who have some ideas on what they like to see or not see in this comprehensive plan. So, you leaped right to your feet, so come on forward, and do you need the center part there? We can clear that keyboard out of the way and, and get you set up so you can use a handheld microphone. And then, make sure you give us your name and address. And then, if you remember when Ms. Benaroff started the meeting, you'll have three minutes, and when you see the amber light, the yellow light come on, you'll have 30 seconds, and you should be thinking about wrapping up your comments so that everybody gets treated fairly in terms of time, too.
Absolutely. So, my name's Keith Olson. I live at 4908 East Sunny Slope Road here in Edina. I'd like to start by just saying, we've got a great place to live, and really appreciate the opportunity to speak here tonight. So, one of the charts I wanted to show here has to do with population growth through history. So, going back to 1960 and then looking forward in this plan through 2040. You know, and some of the observations and thoughts that I had about population growth is that historically, growth in Edina's been pretty consistent, and it's been measured. Through 2010, over the last, you know, 30 years leading up to it, about 2,000 people were added to population. From 2010 to 2040, Edina's expected to grow by more than 15,000 people. The expected rate seems pretty extreme, and it's out of line with what's been historically sustainable. You know, living nearby, I'm sure all of us that drive on 50th know that traffic's already completely out of control. It's, it's crazy, and at times, it's really dangerous. And it seems to me that, based on this relatively slow growth of population across time, you know, the idea of accelerating it this dramatically, just, we don't have the infrastructure for it, and really would be out of character for the city. You know, another chart to share here, and this runs a bit counter to what the last speaker shared, if we go back to 2010 and look at 2010 through 2040, relative comparison to some of our neighboring cities, we can see the Edina here is really close to the top with 33% expected population growth over that period, really only topped by Eden Prairie and with Menetaka close. And with Edina being landlocked essentially, it seems to me that a growth rate that's even close to approaching in Eden Prairie or Menetaka seems pretty far out of line. So, I guess what I really wanted to share with the group here, and really appreciate you all taking the time to hear us out on is, you know, don't grow too fast. We've got an awesome place to live in Edina, and we really want to keep it that way. We don't want to lose it, and letting population get out of control and trying to overbuild and overgrow could do just that. So, please continue to listen, and thanks for the opportunity.
Okay, good. Mr. Olson, thanks for your comments. Folks? Folks? I think Jennifer might have talked about this at the beginning, but this is a neutral place where all opinions are respected, and signs of emotion aren't appropriate here, because there'll be other people with other opinions, varied opinions from your own. So, appreciate Mr. Olson. Now, did you, did you give those documents to the clerk, Mr. Olson? I'm sure we have them, but if not, we should get them.
Yeah.
Yeah, they're on the, okay, we'll pick them up and refer them, make them part of the record. So, thanks for your comments. And folks, if we just respect each other's opinions and keep your emotions in check, we'll be in great shape here. Yes, sir?
I wanted to refer to that last chart. Is that the way you do it?
That's it. It should be right centered there. There you go.
My name is Cal Simmons. I live at 500.
Pick up the handheld, Mr. Simmons.
This one? My name is Cal Simmons. I live at 5038 Bruce Place. Population growth, do Edina's current residents not have a say? For the period 2010, the plan's target 2040, our city now imagines a 33% population growth, 63,600 people. This number is up 20% in just the last four months. For context, the total population of Excelsior and Wayzetta is 5,400 people. That's the amount we've grown in the last five years, the total of those two cities. The centerpiece of all comp plans is the Met Council's requirement to accommodate the envisioned residents' population, thus a 44% increase in housing units over 2010. Take a look at this chart comparing us to our other neighbors. Can any of you answer why we want to pursue this level of growth compared to our other fully-developed neighbors? So, where do we put these new people? The 7% areas of opportunity, also known as neighborhood nodes, hence the dramatic and historically unprecedented density changes. The planners say 93% will go unchanged, but they miss the point that we have to travel through these area, neighborhood nodes, not to mention or even consider the people who live around these neighborhood nodes. Just walk through 50th and France, it's becoming a ghost town. Everything's closing up, but it's claustrophobic. There's way too much massing. This plan does not adequately answer the question, the residents' questions of why? Why does this council think residents want this type of growth? In other words, whose idea is it to grow like this? Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Simmons. Hey, come on. I've asked for civility in here. You should give it. Shouldn't even have to ask twice. This is a town where we've always honored each other's opinions and treated each other with respect, so let's, let's keep, let's keep that in mind here. Thank you. Mr. Christensen?
Thank you, Mayor. And my name is Bruce Christensen. I live at 4515 Brown Dale. I founded Stop the Lid to bring public awareness to a massive densification project, Grandview Green, also known as the lid. I also founded We Can Do Better Edina, which was created to raise public awareness of Edina's radically new tenure vision, the 2018 comp plan. Again, a massive density vision. Just for context, you heard a little bit about the response rate the city's received for its education effort. As of this afternoon, we had 1,920 opens to an email that was sent just 40 hours ago. People are concerned. We believe the 2018 comp plan process missed a few basic foundational elements, context, housing data. We didn't start with baseline information, we launched right into vision planning. By comparison, its predecessor, the 2008 comp plan envisioned a city growing in response to resident wants and needs, resident wants and needs. That plan imagined a relatively small 3% growth. The city's mismanagement of the 2008 plan has us hitting 55,000, up from the 49,000 that was forecasted in the 2030 plan, or in the 2008 plan by 2030, hitting 55,000 by 2020. No wonder we're concerned. It's as if we've, as Cal said, it's as if we've annexed both Wayzetta and Excelsior, actually about 50% more people than that. It's crazy. The evidence, the evidence of the agenda is growing. Unfortunately for some of our neighbors in Nolan Mainz, Avidore, these two properties overwhelm their building sites. And this council and its advisor, the Planning Commission, want more density. The density changes that allegedly are already in the 2018 comp plan were changes made just in the last couple of years to accommodate growth. If you build it, they will come. There's a disconnect between the understanding of this council on population and density. If we're planning for density, we're planning for people. The 2017 Quality of Life Survey demonstrated the residents' primary concerns were overbuilding, density, and traffic. Our council's response, massive increases in land use density. Why the indifference to residents' number-one concern? Please, before the evening's over, explain this to me. Tonight's likely approval of the plan to advance it will be the clearest example to date of this council's indifference to resident wants and needs in favor of an agenda-driven process.
Need Debbie to wrap up? Mr. Christensen?
So, in conclusion, you know, this, this decision you're going to make tonight.
Mr. Christensen, you're over. I'm sorry, I've let you drift over a little bit.
This will define your last 17 months of the council. Please be responsive to the citizens.
Good evening.
My name is Michael Pennella. I live at 5712 View Lane. And I'd like to comment in support of Mr. Christensen on Stop the Lid and We Can Do Better Edina, as I'm a member, and specifically on small area plans. The comp plan process was supposed to be broad-based community visioning process. A simple review of the public hearings for the small area plans seemed to suggest otherwise. In those meetings, concerns, residents were given three minutes to comment. One by one, eight to 10 brave stoles stood up and thoughtfully commented on one issue or another. In general, there's been a lack of resident support for many of the small area plans, primarily based on density, as Mr. Christensen referred to, but it seems that it's not being heard. So, you know, really, the council, the Planning Commission reports to the council, not to the residents. So, if the Planning Commission and the city staff represent the council, not the residents, who exactly is there to support and defend our position? This contributes to our feeling of being frustrated, and ultimately, the residents losing trust and confidence in their city. Thank you.
Thank you.
I live at 3938 West 49th Street.
Would you give us your last name again, please?
It's Godfrey.
Thank you.
And I share the prior gentleman's thoughts on the lack of public outreach for these small area plans, and particularly, and my greatest point of contention is with the use of power that's involved in new development and the power lines and condensers being put into our backyards and front yards, especially around the small area planning. And I don't know if you'll be able to see this, I've lived on West 49th Street for 26 years, and when I moved in, there was a line of power lines that were, you know, one or two lines on the poles. Today, I don't know if you can look at my view, this has happened in 26 years. I'll go through a few more. This is, these are all different poles on 49th Street, and this is what I look at today. And so, the concern is, where do we put the power? I don't want to look at this. I don't want to look at this. And I went through the comprehensive plan pretty quickly, I'm short on time, but I didn't see anything that addresses the need for streetscape. And then, lastly, I'd like to say that I don't believe the area for the study originally included 49th Street, and somewhere or somehow arbitrarily, it was included in the final draft plan.
For the 50th and France small-area plan, you mean?
Yeah. 49th Street was not in the original plan, and if you recall, there was an area of concern over a pathway, and suddenly, the pathway area was moved to the 49th Street, and I understand that that's no longer a part of the plan, although it's etched in the drawing.
Okay. Ms. Godfrey, I need to have you wrap up. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
I'm going to use that center, I haven't used that before, so.
Sure.
So it just goes right in the middle here?
Yep.
Okay. And just pick it up, no stretch?
You're good to go, I think, Ms. Castellano.
Go like this? Okay. Roberta Castellano, 4854 France Avenue South. And I put this chart up because I want to discuss a couple of elements and ask questions, get clarification, get some answers on it. For the mixed-use centers, my understanding is that Grandview is 46 acres guided as mixed-use, 50th and France, 16 acres guided as mixed-use, for a total of 62. But this chart, this is from the staff presentation, and this chart showed 69, and that is reflected in the comprehensive plan draft, PDF 114, shows 69 acres guided. So I want to know what is the correct number, what is being guided? Is there a change in the amount of land being guided in either one of those two districts? Okay, and then the second one is also on that chart, just below, Community Activity Center and Mixed Use Center, Southdale, those are both, for people who aren't familiar with it, those are both out in the Southdale area. This staff presentation does not match the comprehensive plan. The mixed-use center at Southdale has actually disappeared and has been replaced by the Community Activity Center, and the big difference being that the Community Activity Center has a higher minimum of density. And, you know, I have enough concerns with how the mixed-use center at Southdale was raised up over a year, very quickly, from 30 to 150 as a maximum, but, let's see. In the comprehensive plan, it shows 228 acres guided as Community Activity Center. That matches the total on the staff presentation, but from what I can see, there is no more mixed-use center. Everything's at a minimum of, minimum density of 90, so it's being moved up again. And the mixed-use center being down in Southdale bordered on the west by France Avenue, on the north by 70th Street, it's this dark-red area. This is from the 2008 comp plan. In the 2018, the current draft under consideration, it's all shown in pink as Community Activity And the Greater Southdale Plan, it's all shown as pink.
Okay. Ms. Castellano, I have to get you to wrap up, but there's a point in all of this. I think you're, are there some data points that you think are wrong, so they can check them?
Yeah, I'd like to have, yeah, I'd like to have those checked, yeah.
Okay.
And find out what is correct there with the mixed-use center. What is the status of what was the Southdale Mixed Use Center? What is its current status?
Okay. You want to make a subsequent submission for us, so that they can check the numbers?
Yeah, I'll scan it, and I can just send it in.
Okay. All right, good. Thank you.
I'm Arnie Bigby. I live at 7621 Edinburgh Way in the Edinburgh neighborhood, part of the very southern part of the city of Edina. It's not much warmer there than it is here, but it is still farther south. It is the area that's been getting a lot of attention tonight, and I just want to say thank you for all the attention you've given to all the small-area plans. I know since I finished my service on the Human Rights Commission in 2015, I was invited to a lot of sessions that have been mentioned for getting public input on these various plans over the past several years. And I know there were a lot of people involved, the Big Ideas Conferences were excellent, so a lot of planning, and time, effort, and money has gone into this, and I think you've had a lot of public input from citizens throughout the city. Compliments to you for trying to manage all of these various opinions and perspectives from these homes and individual residential lots to neighborhoods like mine, where it's a very dense population, and where in the future, we can assume, as patterns are emerging, that trend is going to continue. And your perception of the future, I think, through that comprehensive plan, along with the Metropolitan Council, is accurate in that regard. To have our eyes closed and not look at that future for what's coming would be a huge mistake for us. And I think the ability to deal with some of the issues we have with traffic, that happens when people have services close by, when there are more bikeways and walkways. Many of these trails are getting covered and being easier to access in any kind of weather, so that's all just a big positive, and it's the way life in cities really is. So my intention here is to thank you, and I like that current plan. I think it's a good blueprint. It's not cast in concrete and doesn't represent a commitment, but it sure does present a good vision for us for the future. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Bigby.
My name is Carolyn Jackson. I live at 5716 Continental Drive, and I'm also the Chair of the Energy and Environment Commission, and I want to thank our staff and the consultants for the work that they did. We put a lot of time into the sustainability chapter and the water chapter, and it came out looking the way we wanted it to, and I'm very thankful to the Planning Commission for all the references to sustainability throughout the comp plan. I think this is quite wonderful. It's a new world, we need to put sustainability up front in our decision-making, not as a last-moment decision, so that, I'm just very, very pleased about that. In general, I'm very much in support of this comprehensive plan. I've heard the word redevelopment brought out tonight. It's important to remember that cities don't stay the same, they age, just the way people do, and being in a cycle of redevelopment right now is actually a blessing. It's bringing new life and new money into our community. We continue to grow, our tax base grows, and it's better than having aging buildings that are falling down and not coming up with especially sustainable building design. We've also got 40,000 people who come into the city every day to come to work, and I'm happy about the affordable housing aspects of this comprehensive plan. If some of those people can come here, or live here and work here, that will reduce our traffic. People have to travel very long distances for retail jobs, because the cost of housing is so high in the metropolitan area. They either have to live way, way out in the periphery of the metro, or in areas of concentrated poverty in our inner cities, and we need to reduce that. We need to spread affordable housing out throughout the entire metropolitan area to help support our people who are working but not at a high income. And finally, one of the things that I read in the comprehensive plan, I went back and read it again today, is it talks a lot about aging in place, and when we talk about the population shifts, and the mayor mentioned this evening, decisions the Met Council makes about where mass transit goes, one of the really neat things about Edina is you don't want to leave. It's a beautiful city, and as we age, we don't want to drive as much. And so if it's possible to move out of our single-family homes and into an apartment that is new and safe and close to transit and close to amenities, then we can age in place. Otherwise, it's a choice between staying in our single-family homes or moving to another community. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Ms. Jackson. Anyone else?
Now's the time for the positive comments, it seems. My name is Hope Melton. I live at 4825 Valley View Road in Edina, and first, I also would like to express my gratitude to you, Mayor, members of the City Council, the Planning Commission, city staff, our consultants, and the small-area plan working groups, and many other Edina residents who thoughtfully and courageously created this draft 2018 comprehensive plan. You did that work with honesty and integrity, and anyone who asserts otherwise is simply wrong. Through 178 public meetings, this plan was created by and belongs to our whole community. It's based on reasonable population growth projections arrived at in consultation with the Metropolitan Council. This plan will impact our long-term future and address, or not, the most significant and urgent challenges we face as a community and a nation: our housing affordability crisis, high levels of inequality, systemic racism, and climate change. We will either choose a plan that substantially addresses those challenges, or we will choose a compromise plan that will increase socioeconomic segregation, inhibit higher-density development, and inhibit public transit, increase carbon emissions, and slow the achievement of Edina's affordable housing and race and equity goals. The housing chapter of the comprehensive plan will play an outsized role in shaping Edina's future. We face an urgent and growing need for affordable housing, especially among our aging population, as Carolyn just mentioned, the largest in the metro area, and young families. The housing chapter's approach of gradually increasing housing density in areas of potential change along transit corridors and near commercial services will enable the city to meet its affordable housing goals while also promoting a more sustainable and equitable community. Your vote tonight will determine whether or not this city will live up to its 2015 vision of itself, a successful, mature, and progressive urban community that strives to lead in a modern and evolving world, one that maintains its heritage and affords all residents a high quality of life while actively embracing the future. Your vote tonight will tell us if we are who we think we are. This is not a zero-sum game. We all win or we all lose. I urge you to approve this draft 2018 comprehensive plan without any amendments that would weaken its ability to meet our major challenges or compromise Edina's reputation as a leader and a progressive urban community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Melton. Mr. Lorenz, did you want to get up and speak?
My name is Frank Lorenz, 7151 York Avenue South, Edina. Three or four years ago, the Met Council produced a forecast that included adding 17,000 people to the city of Edina, and I questioned the mayor about that, and your comment was, and I quote, "We will take care of that," and somehow you did, whether it was a typographical error or an act of complete hubris on the part of the Met Council, the 17,000 additional "you will take and you will house" directive from the Met Council disappeared. I don't know what you did, but apartments are a lousy place to raise children. They really, young people with a growing family need a house with a yard, and that applies until the children are at least a sophomore in high school. As several of the women that spoke before me pointed out, as people become empty nesters in Edina and don't want a large house and everything that comes with it, they would prefer, if they can, to stay in Edina, and they would like to be able to go back into high-quality, safe apartments. So there's a demand for apartments pre-children and post-children. No one believes that the Southdale area is a single-family residential area anymore, and so common sense would tell us that we should build taller apartments to accommodate those two groups that I just described, but at some point, the value of Edina is the fact that we have beautiful areas with single-family houses, and if growth becomes the objective to the exclusion of everything else, then we will, in fact, shoot ourselves in the foot by destroying more and more of the very thing that people want to come to Edina to enjoy. So, the Met Council has an agenda all of its own, and it's an unelected body that is a shadow government run by whichever party has the governor's office. They are not a benevolent grandfather, and what I've heard tonight by some of the people makes me wonder if they have any grasp of reality. The Met Council should not be running our lives.
Thank you, Mr. Lorenz.
Good evening, Mayor Hovland and council members. My name is Steve Brown. I live at 5528 Halifax Lane. I'm here tonight to speak in favor of the 2018 comprehensive plan. A few pieces of background and context for my comments. I've been in Edina for 21 years. Our daughter has grown up in the Edina school system, is now a senior at Edina High School. We love Edina. We're grateful that it has embraced change. We've seen many positive changes since we've moved here. It's even more special a community now than when we moved here two decades ago. When I retired in 2017, I chose to do volunteer work two days a week for Habitat for Humanity as my contribution to address the issue of affordable housing. I decided I could do more, and the place to start was in my own community. So last December, I joined Edina Neighbors for Affordable Housing. Since joining, I've attended nearly all the Planning Commission, City Council, and HRA meetings, which included the comprehensive plan, the small-area plans, and any topic related to affordable housing. I have read and submitted 18 comments on the introduction and vision in the housing and land use chapters of the comprehensive plan. Now, as background to the plan, there's a chart here from Moody's. I'm not quite sure if you can have this, can you zoom in on that? It shows that from 2012 to 2016, the city's tax base grew by 21 percent, while the population grew by a modest 4 percent. This growth in the tax base is being driven by the rem- This growth in the tax base is being driven by the remarkable regeneration of our residential areas and the strong development of our commercial areas. The message I take from this chart is that Edina is thriving. It has momentum. It has desirability. It's attracting people, and it's attracting investment. Those are desirable characteristics. The Comprehensive Plan is about the future. It is not a strategic plan like those developed in corporations. Strategic plans identify specific goals, identify strategies to achieve those goals, and recommend implementation plans to achieve those goals. The Comprehensive Plan has no set goals. It simply tries to address two fundamental questions: Are we going to continue our desirable growth? Where do we want that growth to take place? And secondly, what guidelines do we want to set for this growth? The answer to the first question is we want to grow, growth to take place in 7% of Edina's land area. I think that's sensible. The remaining 93% of Edina is designated to remain unchanged. The answer to the second question is found in the well-thought-out detail of the plan. One guideline I'm particularly pleased is that we're committed to doing our part to provide affordable housing for our local workforce and for seniors who want to stay in Edina. I applaud the city's commitment to affordable housing, as evidenced by how it has woven throughout the Comprehensive Plan and the city's ongoing actions to approve affordable housing projects.
Mr. Brown, I need to have you wrap up.
Yep.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Brown.
I look forward to you favorably looking at this Comprehensive Plan.
Would you want to make that document part of the record, Mr. Brown?
Yeah. It comes right out of the Moody's Investor Service.
All right. We can get that and make it part of the record on your behalf. Anyone else?
Good evening. My name is Chris Bremer. I live at 6001 Ewing Avenue South, and I've been a resident for over 30 years. We live in the most vibrant region in the Midwest. We have a very low unemployment rate here in the Twin Cities and a growing population as a result. This is a good thing. As was explained earlier, we are not forecasted to grow faster than any of our neighboring communities. We're just part of the growth of this area, and we need to be part of that. We should want to be part of that. I'm proud to live in an economically healthy community. And I have concerns about how we respond to growth because I care about my neighbors and I care about the environment. I'm deeply concerned about what kind of world we will leave our children and grandchildren, and so I believe we need to grow responsibly. This means higher-density housing, which will bring new and better transit and reduce commuting and greenhouse gases throughout our region. It also means developing more affordable housing to enable my neighbors, many of whom are seniors, to remain in this community that they love. And yes, families too. I grew up in a two-bedroom apartment in a family of four, and I would maintain I turned out okay. I want to thank the staff, the volunteers, the consultants, and everyone else who contributed to this work, and I hope you'll support the 2018 Comprehensive Plan. I think it's an excellent piece of work. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bremer. Good evening. If you don't have an overhead that you want to use, one of the side podiums works better.
Is this on? Can you guys hear me?
Yep.
I'm Cheryl Bertrand. I live at 5213 Windsor Avenue. And just wanted to mention that a lot of seniors do not, by saying that we want to stay in our community, we actually want to stay in our own homes and not move into apartments or condos. That's it.
Okay. Thank you, Ms. Bertrand. Good evening. Want to pick up that handheld microphone, or you can stand at the side and use that one if you want. Unless you have an overhead, it's probably better to use that.
Hi, my name is Jill Fay, and I live at 4516 Arden Avenue. And I went to high school here, and I have five children, and I've raised them up here. And I like Edina a lot. And I wasn't planning on speaking tonight, so I'm not dressed appropriately for this. But I have had time to read a Comprehensive Plan, and I wish I had time, but it takes a lot of time just to work and raise a family. But it does make me concerned how much, when I drive around, how much Edina is changing. And I wish, I wish I had time to come to these meetings and be well-versed in all these issues, but I don't. I'm just here to say I wish the city were growing not so at a rapid pace. I just, I find it disappointing because I want my children to be able to live here someday and then raise a family like I did. And I just find this meeting somewhat disappointing because it feels like this plan is just passing no matter what. But anyways, that's just my opinion. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Ms. Fay. Anyone else wish to come forward? Yes, sir. Yeah. Come on up. You might be the wrap-up there. We'll see. We'll see.
Good evening. My name is Steve Gertner. I live at 5008 Arden Avenue, 35-year resident. Can't believe I can say that. Feel about 28. I think everyone here tonight is passionate about Edina and what it means to each one of us individually and his families. I will say that I'm in support of some of the efforts that have been made to publicize we can do better Edina and get rid of the lid, those processes. And I will say that there's been a lot of time invested by many people in the small-area planning groups and council members and the Planning Commission. But I have to say that the percentage of people that are actually touched by and were, you know, been involved in those processes is minuscule. And last year, I was here in October at a council meeting. I put, raised my hand to be on the Planning Commission, Small Area Group Commission for the 50th and France area, sent an email, never got contacted back about that. And I find that the communication is really lacking in making things available. And to the previous comment by the lady that is trying to raise a family of five kids, you know, there certainly might be things out there in the media, but it's not easy to find. And I think that as an organization, I think this group could do a lot better in communication and outreach to involve more people. To have, you know, 1,500 or less, you know, people contribute with comments is, you know, a fraction of the population. So I would advocate that the council take a step back from the population and density track that it's on in the current plan as it is and revisit that. Because I think it's a massive growth percentage, and it might be in seven key areas, you know, seven areas, 7% of the land use area for the city of Edina. But those 7%, that area represents, you know, major spots within the community and has a ripple effect in the entire population. 50th Street here, we all travel that, and the amount of traffic has just exponentially changed in the last four, five, six years. And it will continue to go up once this new condo behind 49th and a Half Street is done. So I think there's so much planning going on with business driving a lot of these initiatives and less concern about the residents and how it affects each of us individually. So I appreciate your time, and I look forward to hearing what you're going to, you know, what we can do to make this plan even better than it is right now before its final submission to the Met Council.
Good. Good evening.
Good evening, Mayor, and good evening, council members. My name is Janet Ketuie. My address, 7201 York Avenue, Apartment 519. I am here to thank you and ask you to vote in favor of the comprehensive plan. I have had to reflect on back in 2018. I liked some pieces of the Comprehensive Plan back in 2018. It had affordable housing in there. Somehow that was shelved and never came to fruition. But as someone who has lived here, I am, we are in dire need of affordable housing. I can't, I mean, we have some, but we don't have nearly enough for the people who really need affordable housing. I am standing here proud to say my youngest is graduating Edina High School, and she's going on to college. But my middle child, who has been living with me, just moved away into Uptown, and that's where she could find an affordable housing. These are our millennials. These are the people who we need to live amongst us to continue a vibrant community. If we are going to age in place, and I believe we are one of the highest aging population in the metro area, we are going to die, and change is constant. The only way we can renew ourselves is having change. So I am going to urge you to support the Comprehensive Plan so people like my children who can come back and live here will be fantastic. But it's definitely a challenge finding affordable housing in our community. Even I myself, I have struggled to find one. And I stand here because the only part I can find as affordable is on York Avenue and going that direction. And I have to say, most of those residents are not here, but I am here on their behalf. And I would like to urge you to pass the Comprehensive Plan and support it. And I thank you so much for all you do. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Ketuie. Anyone else want to share their thoughts? All right. Is there a motion to close the public hearing?
So moved.
Second. We had a motion, a second, to close the public hearing. All those in favor of closing the public hearing, say aye.
Aye.
Close? Carried?
So, one of the things that we've been asked to think about tonight is whether it's the right time to be releasing this current version, update, they call it in the notes in front of me, of the draft Comprehensive Plan to our neighbors for their input over the next six months. And Member Stott, you made the observation that if we did release it, it wouldn't, it wouldn't stop us from continuing to absorb these thoughts that we had tonight and other thoughts that'll come in from people. I suppose alternatively, from time to time in the past when we've had an important public hearing like this one is this evening, we've left here without making a decision, respectively wanting to go back and think about everything we've heard for a couple of weeks and then reconvene and decide what we wanted to do. I'm willing to hear thoughts on the process from this point out, and I don't know if folks have thoughts on what they'd like to see accomplished this evening. I suppose one thing we could ask Director Teague is if we took the route of waiting a couple of weeks and let all this kind of sink in along with everything else, you know, that we want to read, that people might send in, is that, what's the consequence of that? I guess is a short answer, or a short question.
Yeah, you certainly can do that. The consequence would be, you know, we have a deadline of December 31st of this year to submit to the Met Council. We've got the public hearings scheduled early November, early December for Planning Commission and then City Council. If we delayed it two weeks, it's pushing those public hearings closer to the holidays. But it can certainly be done.
Okay. Manager Neil.
Yeah. So I think, I think the idea that we've looked at as staff is you have a little bit of play in your schedule. Do you want to have more flexibility on the back end of the process after you've gotten six more months of feedback from the community and other communities? Or do you want to take that, that play in the, in the schedule and use it now? Because even if you, even if you do put it two weeks, make a decision two weeks from now, I don't think you would really have time to incorporate comments that you hear in the next two weeks into a new draft because at that point, we really do have to get it out the door in order to give, give the adjoining communities their necessary time.
Mr. Mayor.
Yes.
Just a couple of thoughts. I guess, one of the things that I always think about when we're trying to make this decision about whether to lay over for another couple of weeks is how late it is and how worn out everybody is. And by our standards, it's actually not that late. And folks are here who are interested, so I'm inclined to go ahead. But with the caveat that I think, I think given that we're talking about just taking this draft and sharing it with our neighbors and not finalizing yet, what I don't want to do is go through, you know, editing of the document on the dais. I think we need to, as council members, give some broad direction as to, as to where we want to go. I, I think the document is in need of a strong vertical edit to put it in one voice, to capture some of the things like Ms. Castellano identified tonight, or Julie Rissler identified at the Planning Commission, some of those things that are details that maybe haven't gotten caught to make sure they're right. So I would be okay with going ahead, provided we're not going to go ahead and try to do any detailed editing from the dais, but instead give some broad direction as a council.
Anyone else? Member Anderson? Did Manager Neil convince you one way or the other, or whether to go forward, or?
No, we haven't discussed that yet, Your Honor. But it's, we could. I, I wouldn't be opposed to delay a vote on this on the basis that we spend two weeks in diligent pursuit of opinions and input. I, I think further query based on, I mean, we've all received hundreds of emails, and we have the public testimony tonight. And as a result, I, it seems like it's prudent to give that some steeping time. But we can go ahead as well. And that's, you know, I think that there's, it's a, it's a mixed blessing to do that, but I think more rumination time, more circulation in the community is, would be a good idea.
Yeah, I'm okay with that, too. I'd be fine with another couple of weeks.
My question is, what are we going to know two weeks from now that we haven't heard? So we, there's clearly concern about population projections and that density and that element. Very clear. I hear that very well. And then I hear, you know, people that are happy with where the plan is today. And waiting two weeks to then push it on to our neighbors for their review, I don't feel like, you know, if this were the final vote, I think I'd have a different perspective. But hopefully, we can continue gathering information. You know, we're not going to stop. You know, the whole, this plan's going to be edited. I agree, you know, it's really a great effort to this point, but it reads like 145 people wrote it, which is a great thing, right? There are, all of our commissions have helped write this, and it just needs a little bit of not editing in the sense of changing content, just editing a little bit in terms of, so each chapter heading reads a little bit the same. That's minor, minor, minor stuff. But the bigger issue is, you know, this, this, how we deal with these projections. And frankly, I'm not sure there are projections to deal with. You know, and we can, that's, that's a conversation I think we're better off having tonight, one way or another, how we feel about that stuff, so it's out there, and so there's some dialogue. And then we have six months before this comes back. I think we're just better off doing that.
Member Rindel, your thoughts?
I think I agree more with Member Fisher.
albeit probably 85% of them are identical. Acknowledging that there are a lot of voices coming at us, I believe, I don't, I don't think we're going to hear anything in the next two weeks that we haven't already heard. I think that there have been a couple of questions asked tonight and points taken tonight that we can provide as, as guidance. And I appreciate the data particularly, because that does help frame what, you know, we can, we can do a lot of editing, but when you have data to frame that edit, it really does help to, to make an edit that is needed and clear. And so I, I'm fine with going ahead tonight.
I, I've been sitting here thinking about this in both ways. And unbalanced, I think, I'd like to see it get to our neighbors, some, get something to our neighbors to look at. And then in the, in the gap period, we can do some work on this. For the folks that are really concerned about these population projections, I have the sense they weren't convinced by Commissioner Thorson about what, we don't, you know, we don't have to do what the Met Council tells us to do. We run our own town, we do our own projects. But nonetheless, there's a concern out there about, about the rate of growth. And it's something that I've been giving some thought to, and I've had other conversations with colleagues here on the council, and it seems to me that in, one of the things we could do in the gap period here is have at least one, maybe two, community conversations, if we can find the right people to guide the conversation about the, about growth. You know, what are the, what are the benefits and detriments of growth? What are the benefits and detriments, the negatives of no growth? Because I know around the country, where with cities that have taken a no-growth strategy, it's, it's high stakes, because these costs it, it takes to run our towns that we all own together. To burden, you know, one of the benefits of this density that we have had is that we've, we've been subsidizing single-family homeownership. In an average, single-family home in Edina, 500, in a median-priced home, 540,000, it might produce $5 a square foot in property tax. A tall building, a condo like the Weston produces probably $10 to $12 a square foot in property tax. Well, what that's been telling us is that density in the right locations, where we can manage it, where it's appropriate from a growth standpoint, and enhances the quality of life and not detracts from it, it helps subsidize single-family homeownership. Because as we try to maintain what we all own together, we haven't wanted to heap that burden on the, on the 93% of the folks that are living in a single-family home. We've looked for other strategies to try to make sure that we can spread that risk and spread that responsibility, and then, and minimize the impact on, on folks. And as, Mr. Brown's data from our own rating agencies, you know, we got a double AAA bond rating from Moody's and Standard &amp; Poor's. To think that we've had 21% growth in property values in four years with only a 4% increase in population is a really interesting figure that I'd like to drill down on a little bit more. But I, I would think it would be worthwhile for us to have a, at least one, maybe a couple of broad community conversations about growth and its implications, no growth and its implications over the next six, eight months. So that's something else to think about. But I'm, I'm personally comfortable, based on what I've heard and the other, and the arguments that have been advanced by my colleagues, that I'd like to see this, this draft in its present state go to the neighbors, and, and then we can keep working on this thing, because there are, there are things to be done. And then, as Member Staunton says, from a policy standpoint, you know, those conversations, we need to have those yet. The editing can take place. And I was looking in the back there at Mr. Nemiroff, who edited the 50th and France Plan. I thought, there's nothing more I'd like to see you do than take on a 500-page plan for editing, just like you did with that, the good work you did down at 50th and France. So anyway, I'd be in favor of, it's, I've been, I'm going in circles here now, but I'd be in favor of approving a motion that would send this, this draft update on the comp plan to our, to staff to release it to our adjacent communities and affected agencies for their six-month review. So is there a motion to that effect? Or any other comment?
Well, I think if we're going to do that, I think we ought to explain where we chat on it, so.
Okay. You want to, you want to start off?
I could. I guess that's what I get for raising my hand.
Way to go, way to speak up.
So, so let me start by saying, echoing some of the comments about the great work that a lot of folks have done on this, from the Planning Commission, who acted it as a task force, to the various different commissions. Every commission produced a chapter of this, and that was great work. And over the past, really, six or seven years, we've done six or seven small area plans that have all been resident-led efforts to try to map the future of those areas. And I think it's all been great work and, and has produced good visions for the future. And as I go through the chapters, there's some great stuff on energy and environment, on transportation. The Human Rights and Relations chapter is terrific. It's really, you know, engaging our race inequity work that we've done over the last several years, and, and capturing that and moving us forward as a more inclusive and engaged community. And really, the one debate is really about this whole growth business. And, and I think it's an interesting conversation for me, because normally, growth is a positive thing. You know, we want our economy to grow, we want our investments to grow, we want our kids to grow, we want our relationships to grow. Generally, the things we don't want to grow are things like weeds or tumors. You know, we, we kind of think of most things that we enjoy, that we want to grow, that that'll make them healthier, and that, even in the business community, sometimes you hear the, the phrase, "Grow or die," that you can't stand still, that you have to grow. And so I find the conversation interesting. I also find it interesting, because I think when I drill into the numbers, the growth that we're talking about in these projections is not that different than the growth that's happened over the last decades. When you look at the population numbers, sure, there's a 33% population growth projected between 2010 and 2040. And that seems on its face to be a rapid increase, because there was only an 8% to 9% growth between 1970 and 2010. But when you look at the household growth, the household growth that's projected from 2010 to 2040 is 44%. The household growth that happened between 1970 and 2010 was 60%, so about the same. And if you think about it, it makes sense. From 1970 to 2010, we were expanding our single-family home inventory. We built out the whole west side of the town. It was really about the end of the last century when we finally ran out of space. Since I've been on the Planning Commission and the council, I think there's only been two major subdivisions, the Acres Dubois over in Morningside, and the, and the Berman subdivision over off of Blake Road. Other than that, there's been a few that have subdivided one lot into two or maybe three, but no big, no big building, no big additional inventory of single-family homes. Instead, what has happened over the last 15 or 20 years is we've experienced the tear-down-rebuild, because people have continued to come into the community and wanted housing that fit their needs, and so they've bought an existing single-family home and, and replaced it with one that better fit their needs. So now we're at this point where if we're going to continue to grow, we have to think about it differently. And hence, this notion of infill in these small areas, in these commercial nodes. And if you think about that, it's an interesting time for it to be discussed as well, because over the last 20 years, we've experienced a real change in the way retail and commercial businesses are unfolding. And there's more space for, in the greater Southdale area, you're seeing a dramatic transformation in the Southdale Mall, where we've had big department stores going away, replaced by things like Lifetime Fitness. And, and I think there's going to be some, there's already been some housing, there's going to be other changes there, and I think that's an indication of things to come. So the question becomes, how do we move forward? And just because we may want to grow, doesn't dictate how we grow. And later tonight on the agenda, we're going to talk about a housing task force that I think I've been advocating for, and, and we're, I think, going to move forward tonight, an effort to chart a course for what kind of housing needs we need. How do we complement this inventory of single-family housing that we have in a way that will help the community grow and improve? And there's a whole bunch of reasons why we might want to do that. But one of them that I think is really interesting is this whole notion of how do we make our schools continue to grow and improve? I think everybody, many, many, many of the people who I talked to moved to Edina for the schools, to have their kids in the schools. And a lot of people I know have stayed here after their kids have finished with school. And the problem is, eventually, all the single-family homes are filled, and there isn't room for the next generation. And what has happened, if you look at it in the statistics, since 1970, from 1970 to 2010, there was a 26% decline in enrollment. And that was because families were getting smaller, even though we were adding households. And that's why the population growth was smaller, even though we were adding households at a rapid pace. So part of what we need to think about is how do we make sure we're supporting the schools by facilitating enrollment? Now, that doesn't mean, Ms. Bertrand, that anybody has to move out of their home. It's just if somebody wants to move out of their home and stay in Edina, we ought to think about what kinds of housing folks are looking for, so that they can do that. And I think that's a conversation we need to have as a community, and think about how we can make all that happen. So when we talk later tonight, I think we're going to advance a housing task force to talk about not just where, but what types of housing. You know, some people don't want to live in a really small apartment in a high-rise. Some people want to live in a townhome. Some people want to live in ownership instead of rental. Some people want to live in a, maybe a smaller house. But I think all of that is a worthwhile conversation for us to have about what's our broad strategy for housing, for what types of housing for we have, for what kinds of affordability. On affordability, you know, here's a statistic for you. Our, our median household income between 1989 and 2017 doubled from $48,000 to $96,000. But the median single-family home value more than tripled during the same period of time. Now, some people would say that's a good thing, but I'm not sure it's sustainable, and it does, it does raise a question about affordability, that I think we need to sink our teeth into and we need to talk about. And so I'm going to advocate, as part of our meeting later tonight, that we move forward with this housing task force, and get people with a variety of perspectives to really drill into this. But in the meantime, I am going to be in favor of this plan. And I just would close with one last thing. I think it's important, as we embark on this, to do so in good faith. There's a fine line between community and tribalism. And I would suggest that community is about how, how we move together to build something, and we're bonded by a common affection. And tribalism tends to be focused on a enemy, a common enemy. And I think we need to work really hard to make sure we don't slip into that trap, to be kind and forgiving to different perspectives from different people in our community, and to work together to figure out, as we're encountering a new generation, how we can do as well as the generations that preceded us to make our community as the best place that it can be. Everybody who's here tonight is here because they're passionate about our community, and we all ought to give ourselves some space to realize that we're after the same goal, and we may have some different ideas about it, but we can get there. Thank you, Mr. Mayor.
Thank you. Member Brindle?
Well, I'm not going to repeat that, because you said it so well. So my notes reflect a lot of what you just said. I will pick up on a couple of things from the public hearing. Kat Godfrey mentioned the, her concern about her view of the electrical poles and the electrical wires. I would like to find out what Excel can do to concentrate some of those wires and maybe not, maybe not make it so ugly. I've been to Panama, I've been to some third-world countries, and the power lines are very unorganized, they're a mess. And while this isn't quite there, it's getting there. And it's because it just, I mean, it, it becomes a kludge after it's been attitude, and attitude, added to, and added to over time. So I'd like to find out if Excel can improve that. I think they probably can. So, but as far as, as far as the other comments, I think that these are things that we can look at. The draft of the comprehensive plan, there is work to do. There's definitely work to do. I handed off all of my notes as going through it, and I, I referred to them as my raw notes, because I just, I just, as I read it, I just threw notes into a, into a document and sent those to Carrie today. So, and I'm certainly not going to go through all those. But as far as where we are today, is the draft in a state that it can be shared with our neighboring communities, who I believe have the same population concerns, they have the same density concerns. They're not going to read this and go, "What's going on in Edina?" They're going to read this, and they're going to read the same thing they're reading in their own plan. So I, I think it's, it's fine to share it, and then do the work we need to do to tighten it up for ourselves.
Member Anderson?
Thanks. You know, I've given this a lot of thought, and I, and I didn't have a chance to talk to Manager Neil any further about the vote, but let me just mention a few things, because I've spent a lot of time trying to organize my thoughts here tonight. The 2018 comp plan, as we consider it tonight, is a result of uncountable hours of hard work and preparation. That commitment is admirable and appreciated, presents the possibility that our town transitions from the type of community it currently is, with suburban-scale, commercial areas to a node-centric, high-density, first-tier urban community. We should make no mistake that we are a society and a city in transition. At the crux of our scrutiny tonight, and while this is a preliminary vote, it's a formative vote. We're deciding what we're turning over, and we'll ultimately decide with a few changes what actually will be submitted. So at the crux of our scrutiny is the question, what's Edina's place in doing our part in the metropolitan area? What should it be? Have we done too little? Have we done enough? This council is making progress and will continue to work on affordable housing, environmental issues, development issues, and the other areas addressed and defined in the comp plan. Our residents must be aware that reasonable growth and change is inevitable, as it always has been. Lincoln said, "The dogmas of the past are inadequate to the present." What he said is, "As the cause is new, so we must think anew and act anew." At the same time, I believe in making decisions, weighing the views of our residents carefully and seriously. and seriously. Edina is designated by the Metropolitan Council as urban, as opposed to urban center designation. That's the same designation as St. Louis Park, Richfield, Minneapolis, among others. The minimum density recommendation for urban communities is 10 dwelling units per acre. 10 units per acre. And you can find these facts, these figures, referenced throughout the comp plan in various tables. I'm going to drill down on a table or two, but the minimum density for urban centers is 20 dwelling units per acre. Our comp plan calls for up to 20 units per acre, twice as high as recommended. In that respect, we plan to perform more as an urban center, rather than as an urban designee. Now, it's not bad or good. We're just dealing with this. This is what it is. Why is that important? Because we've been among the fastest-growing cities in the metro, exceeding even Minneapolis' rate of growth. We're forecast to grow at over 15%. It's all in the comp plan. Over 15% from 2020 to 2040, which is the highest of any community other than Eden Prairie, forecast at 20.4% in the same timeframe. That population increase, our population increase, would be 32.7% from 2010 through 2040. Eden Prairie has a suburban designation with large undeveloped areas. Why are we growing like this? There's many answers, and closely regulated growth contains many, many benefits. And they've all been discussed here tonight. If not closely regulated, it can create unplanned far consequences. In the end, we're growing population because we choose to. The metropolitan forecasts are simply that. They're forecasts that are based on actual and permitted developments. So the more we solve for population increases, the higher the forecast. So we're driving that. Again, it's not bad or good. This is what we're dealing with. The current plan, for instance, at permitted densities, would allow a single project in areas such as Grandview, 50th and France, or 70th and Cahill, to approach or exceed the total number of units allocated to its land use category, as illustrated in Table 311. I have a copy of it here. I can't bring it up. I can't load here tonight for some reason. Those allocations are either understated or in error, but don't seem to conform to the small-area plan. So this is an area of edit, something that we have to look at. And Member Brendel sent her edits to Director Teague, and that's something to take a look at, as an example. Only four units are shown in neighborhood notes from 2016 to 2020. Current development at 44th and France, or at Valley View Wooddale, already exceed that. There's other examples. What I'm missing is the clear connection of redevelopment, staging, to sufficiency of infrastructure, public facilities and public services, and our plan improvements. Now, this is a 20-year plan, essentially. And so in that 20 years, can we find solutions? Can we solve these problems? Perhaps. But they're not noted specifically in the comp plan. That definitely needs attention. Infrastructure capability must determine where higher densities can be created without affecting adjoining neighborhoods. Arterial access is the key to success, such as that in the Greater Southdale District. As an example, 70th is a collector, not an artery. Two lanes. Got four lanes at Southdale, and serving the Greater Southdale area. Additionally, the ability of consumers to access the commercial spaces that we're creating in mixed-use development is quite important. We currently lack good transit to offset that concern. Earlier tonight, there was a brief conversation in our work session about developing a better circulator system. Right now, it's tough to move people around without getting into cars and driving. If we can't get there easily, we probably won't go there. My intention is not to hack away at the comp plan. We want it to be a valuable guiding instrument, which reflects the needs and desires of our residents, both those living here now, and those in the future. So I would move to employ a professional housing study task force. We're going to talk about that later tonight, and I wish frankly that that vote had been taken before here, so I wouldn't have to be suggesting amendment, but I think that's important. Chapter three, land use, needs to be reconciled to the small-area plans while revisiting density and population forecasts, so that they're in alignment. As an example, the potential densities and land use categories found in the Greater Southdale District are aligned with that plan's vision. Yet, the potential for residential development is far in excess of what's allocated in Table 311 and the Metropolitan Council projections. A third-party housing study needs to be done by a qualified research company. I would like to see that done and inserted into this comp plan before it's circulated to our neighbors. We need to have that to begin to give a third party to shine a flashlight on what we're doing, so we determine what pace we build at. We're going to grow. We're going to continue to develop. While the task force is being formed, I would prefer to take a bit more time to query or survey residents as to how they feel about this level of population expansion. It's been a common theme here tonight. It is a significant concern throughout the community. We don't want to overlook that. That's the prudent course. I've talked about the number of emails. They're numerous. The level of concern is high. It should be addressed. We're going to vote tonight. As far as I'm concerned, for me to support it, if we can include a professional housing study task force in that as an amendment, if we can include a third-party housing study needs as an amendment, and if we can find a way to get more time, to get opinions, to get queries from the community, I think we can find a way to do that, by the way. If we can do that, then I can support this, but with those amendments. Thank you.
Thank you. All right. Member Fisher? I was just thinking about one of your comments, and we'll come back to it a little bit later.
So if we were an automobile, I think a comp plan would be the navigation system. All right? So it's like the GPS system. It makes sure that we're staying on the right road, we don't veer off down some alley. We generally have a direction. That's the comp plan. If we were an automobile, what the comp plan would not be is the acceleration system or the braking system. Okay? That's what we, you know, so I think we're spending a lot of time talking about Met Council's projections, when the real important part of this comp plan is where is the direction we're going? What is the community we want to be? It is really hard, as a city council, for us to control the population, short of saying, you know, "We're not going to allow any more housing to be built," or "We're going to allow this type." And I get it. That's part of this conversation. But the reality is, we haven't actually increased the densities that much over the previous comp plan. You know, every small-area plan we did was a marginal, moderate kind of approach. So why is the Met Council projecting 63,600 people, and does that matter? One of the things that's missing in all this is a bigger context, a greater context. It's not that they're just sitting there and saying, "Hey, Edina, we want you to grow." The reality is, and we've known this, when I say "we," long before I was ever on a city council, if you talk to demographers, you go to any presentation for the last 18 years, they've been talking about this wave of growth that's going to happen in this metropolitan region. The actual number in the 2040 plan was very consistent with what I heard 12, 14 years ago. That we're going to have 888,000 more people in this metropolitan area than we had in 2017, when they wrote that plan. And that's not that we're out there, you know, I mean, that's just a fact, right? And it's not just this region. You know, 80% of Americans live in urban areas. That's a huge difference from, you know, many decades ago. We're an urban society now. So what they're really projecting is that 1.3% of those people that are going to come here between now and 2040 are going to probably end up in Edina. You know, if you think about the whole region, that's not a crazy kind of estimate. You know, it sort of makes sense. It almost looks like that they're a little light, if you look at just our area compared to the rest. But the fact is, we can't control that. If you think about, from where we're sitting today, that's another 11,000, a little over 11,000 folks moving here. That's about 10%. The number, all the numbers have been talked about tonight, it's about 10% per decade growth. I looked back at the last 13 decades in Edina, only four of them had less growth than that. Okay? Now granted, you know, we were growing from wheat fields, right? Today, we're growing from fallow parking lots, and old office buildings, and retail that's never going to be the same. But it's growth all the same. The other thing that's interesting, if you read the documents from Greater MSP, this isn't just about a bunch of people moving into metropolitan areas. This is about economic competitiveness as well, as a region. And right now, according to Greater MSP, there's a labor force shortage of 62,000 people in the mid-to-high-level, skill-level workers. And that number's growing. So if you think about this from a regional perspective, there is a big need for those young and talented workers to move here. And Edina will have to do our part. They're going to want to be living in areas like this. So how do we make that happen? Do we want that to happen? That's really the issue. What are the ramifications if it doesn't happen? If we just say, "We're not going to grow, let everyone else take it"? There's been a lot of chatter about the city council, like, "These five people are actually driving these numbers." I want to be very clear about something here tonight. I've attended a few meetings, as this comp plan has gone along. Certainly, we've all received updates from the Planning Commission, as this process has gone along. I just finished reading the final page of this plan this morning at 10:00 a.m. Okay? Takes a long time. 423 pages. Really good, though. 145 residents of our community were actively involved in writing this document. Well over two years. All led by the Planning Commission. I can't even begin to thank all of those people for the immense amount of time, and effort, and passion that was put into this. It's actually 179 public meetings, because no one's counting the Planning Commission meeting that happened a couple weeks ago. You know, I ran for city council because of this comp plan. And it's not because I wanted to control one item or any item in the plan. In fact, I'm very proud of the fact that I haven't inserted one thing into this plan. I ran because I wanted to make sure that there was a robust community effort, and to look forward, to look into the future and face that future. Not pretend something's not going to happen because it feels uncomfortable. This is really uncomfortable. Growth is uncomfortable, especially the pace that's being projected out there. But I'm not sure we can stop the regional growth that's happening. What we can do is figure out how it's going to work in our community. What parameters can we put on that? And that's a good discussion that we need to have. So the only thing I did ask of this comp plan was that there was a kickoff meeting that was focused on the really big picture. That we don't just dive into compartmentalized planning, that we think about the whole. And the other thing I asked is that we have a midpoint check-in, where all those 145 people and all those commissions get into one room and share with each other what they're working on. And those two things happened, and it was great. So thank you for making that happen. My only two requests. So my question is, what happens if we just say, "No, let's not change. Forget it. Let's just stay the same." Well, we have a real-life example we can actually look to. And it's actually the real reason that I ran for city council, because I was on that Planning Commission 10 years ago. I helped write it. I helped do what all of you were doing. And then it got right here, to this very night. And here's the document, right here. And it was obliterated by the city council that night. And it was really two council members, and it really makes me wonder, now that I'm seeing, you know, how this works from this side, I get it a little bit better. I'm a little more forgiving, by the way. But, so the question is, it's interesting. So this is the edited version from that council session, and many after that. And it might be good to know that they did reduce the population projection in 2008. They reduced it by 1,500. And that's great. Hopefully, it made people feel great. But we blew past it, right? Because you can change that number, you can make the number whatever you want. It's just a projection. It doesn't define what really is going to happen. So by pretending it wasn't going to happen, didn't stop it. The other thing that happened is that there was a really great housing chapter that had some really forward-thinking ideas about how we were going to deal with affordable housing in this community. It was a problem 10 years ago, 20 years ago. Not as much of a problem as it is today. So it was taken out. A lot of it was taken out. Much of it. Where are we with affordable housing today? Did it help to just pretend it wasn't an issue? I don't think so. Cahill Gardens was a big part of that plan. Understanding that our industrial area was going to change dramatically, we needed to have a plan for it, was wiped out. What's happening in our industrial park? Tenants are leaving. Things are changing. We're getting pressure. And we don't have the answers right now. Land use, height, and density, much of it was taken out. Where do you think the stress has been in the last 10 years? It's because we don't have a real plan. We didn't have an agreed-upon plan for those areas that are abutting our single-family neighborhoods, and it's where a lot of the tension has been. So I would argue, without the navigation system in place, there's a lot more stress for all of us. This is hard, but we are so much better off facing it, figuring out together how we're going to deal with what's coming, than just saying, "I don't like the number, make it go away." Because it won't go away. We're better off figuring out how to deal with it. So we have this really unique opportunity, and those 145 people have dialed into it very well. So 10 years ago, we talked about these areas of change. This Planning Commission has just tackled it. They've done all these small-area plans, and we're in a much better place, because now we have an idea about how these areas are going to work. We have areas like Southdale, and Pentagon Park, and Cahill, which, yes, they can actually take more people. And I would argue that they will be better for it. Large areas that can be more vibrant, more connected, sustainable, housing choices, employment, new parks, all of those things can happen, and they all happen when you have higher densities. They don't happen when you have to drive there. I mean, Saturday, I actually had to go get a haircut over at 6800, and I live probably 20 minutes away in the Cornelia neighborhood. And for some reason, we didn't have a car. I had to walk. Can you imagine? And 20-minute walk, and I'm thinking about this comp plan the whole way. I'm thinking, wow, you know, there's almost like 70% sidewalks now. You know, a few years ago, it was only probably the 25%. What would happen if this area actually developed to the point where people would think walking first? Or, you know, transit that actually is possible when you have more people? So we have this idea that we can have the single-family neighborhoods that we so desire, and still meet these growth opportunities, and make parts of our community even more amazing. I can, the Southdale area, with more people living in it, and less big parking lots, and people driving around, is going to be a better place. So the last thing I will say, and this is just sort of my review of the document, again, it's in a good spot. I really like where it's at. We do need to do, you know, the touch-up, the final edits, to make it seem like it's more consistent, but that's just, you know, hardly worth even talking about. talking about. Probably the most important thing I saw is that Bob Stewart's name is not in the credits. It's got to be in the credits because he was on the council for a good chunk of this as well. And I would just say that there were, there are a lot of great parts of this plan, but the arts and culture chapter just was a home run in my book. It's the first time arts and culture has been in comp plan. I don't know if it's in anyone's comp plan. If you read that chapter, they really got it. They talked about, they intertwined all of these issues that are in all of the other chapters and somehow folded it together and were inspiring about how change is going to happen. And by anchoring ourselves in our own art and culture, it helps us actually manage the things that will change in the future. It was really well done. The only other thing I'd say is on the implementation, couldn't agree more. We got to focus on this housing task force, understand what we've got, understand what we could have. And it's really an extension of all of this stuff that we're talking about. And then I just want to say, I'm going to be pushing very hard for the Cahill Industrial Park study. It's mentioned in this plan, it's talked about. And even tonight, we've got a regional trail that they're trying to align through an area where we don't even have a plan for the area. We should get that done so we make sure that regional trail is exactly where we want it. And with that, I'm definitely ready to send this out to our neighbors. And the job's not done. And we still have to get to December, and we still have to work on a few things, but I'm happy with where we're at.
Thank you.
Thank you all. Those are wonderful comments from all of you. The years that I've been on the council and then been your mayor, I've come to think about town as a little bit like a person, and it's on a journey from here to there. And in fact, we're all on a journey from here to there. And the distinction between a town and a person is, the person is on a journey from here to there with a finite ending. A town can have a finite ending if it's not careful about how it gets from here to there. Because a town in many ways is also like a business. And if, all of you that are out there in the audience that are in business, you know that the status quo is really going backwards. You just don't know it for a while. And sometimes, when you do figure it out, it's too late. You don't want that to happen to your town. You don't want that to happen to your business. You don't want to have that happen in your, in your personal life. I look at this, the different elements of this comp plan that were covered in almost 500 pages. And there's just a few parts of it that have some problematic aspects to it for some of our residents. So I look at, you know, you look at water resources, parks and trails, implementation, economic competitiveness, resilience, arts and culture, remember Fisher mentioned, heritage preservation, energy and environment, health, human rights, and then community services and facilities. Hardly any comments about that that are, that are negative. All of our concentration is in that area of land use and housing. And then some with respect to transportation because they're, they're linked together, as we all know. So these, today, when I was working on this, I got to think about, one of the, one of the major purposes of the work that we do here year after year is to make sure that we try to achieve some form of lifecycle housing. And that's what we tried to achieve in the 2008 plan as well. And somebody had mentioned earlier, Avidor, being out of scale for the, their opinion, being out of scale for the neighborhood. I don't, I don't agree, and I think it'll be a wonderful addition to the neighborhood. But I'll give you an example of why the Avidor and things like the Avidor are important when we talk about lifecycle housing. So there's 165 units over there. 18 of them are affordable. They're going to get filled right away by residents of our town that qualify, probably seniors, for, for those rent reductions that are necessary. They've got 37 of those units rented already, and they won't be ready for occupancy for several months. Two-thirds of those people are Edina residents that have signed up to live at the Avidor, the 55-plus housing. They're coming out of single-family homes. And some of them have already sold their homes. Some are coming from other suburban areas, some are coming from out of state to live near families. But they're, but the ones that are living in Edina are coming out of single-family homes. And it's important that they're coming out of single-family homes because they're, they're making available those homes for kids and for families. And we know from the work that we recently did with the school district, that the place you're going to find the kids are in single-family homes. There was, there was a worry a while back amongst some of the folks in our town that these apartments that were being built were going to cause an overtaxing burden on the school district. We hired a, the former state demographer, Hazel Reinhardt, who told us that each apartment produces .02 kids. So in the 270 units, odd units, out of 71 France, which is the Byerly's Apartments, there's three kids in that apartment building. Some of those kids that are in apartment buildings are in the Richfield School District, but that's neither here nor there. We need kids in our schools. As Member Staunton pointed out, 26%, there's been a 26% drop in student population in Edina schools over the period of time from 1970 to 2010. We're not stressing our schools by having an increase in dwelling units or an increase in population. If you ask the people on the school board, they say they want more kids in our community. Each one of those kids deserves a great education and helps us perpetuate this, this wonderful school system that we have. So if the single-family homes are the only place producing kids, we need to be in a position where we're giving people in that lifecycle of housing the opportunity to live where they want to live and how they want to live. And that's what we're trying to do here. And that's what we're doing in large part in this comprehensive plan. We don't have this whole housing thing figured out. That's why we're going to talk in a little while about a housing, a housing plan, a housing study. At the high end, it's taken, taken care of itself a bit with all the tear-downs and rebuilds that we've had in our community. What a tremendous investment a town can be so proud of. We've had over 800 of our single-family homes torn down and rebuilt and added tremendously to that, to that market value of the property in our town. That pace isn't going to continue. And we've, we're working on the lower end as well with some of the affordable housing strategies that we have. But finding housing for people that is affordable, like it used to be for a school teacher, is really a critical thing and an essential part of the work that we're doing here. So I don't want to, I don't want to belabor this too much. I know that people have some concerns about population growth. I think it's a legitimate concern. How do we manage growth, I think, is an important thought for all of us to have as we work through these next few months. And we can all learn about this together and look at these growth figures and figure out together where we're going to go. Because we're a lot better in this procession of getting from here to there together than we are fighting with each other. So let's, let's just keep that in mind as we're, as we're going forward on this comprehensive plan and trying to create something that works for our whole town. So thanks to all of you for coming tonight. I really appreciate it. And I appreciate the work that's been done by everybody involved in this process. So now we're back to what we had talked about only a half hour or so ago, and that is the approval of the draft comprehensive plan update and authorizing staff to release it to adjacent municipalities. One thing I wanted to address was Member Anderson's concern about hiring a third-party housing study, third-party, third-party housing group to study this housing issue. Personally, I feel like the housing task force, that's kind of, that's going to be right in their wheelhouse. And I don't think, as the Planning Commission did, that we need to be hiring a third party to do that housing study to make it part of this plan. It may, for me, it may come up at some point in the future that we think that part of it's worthwhile. But I think what I expect to have happen here tonight is that we'll approve this housing task force. And I think they'll begin that work. So I don't have that same concern about hiring a third party to look at analyzing our housing needs. I think we can do that well ourselves, unless I'm misinterpreting something here.
Well, I'm, yeah, I'm kind of wondering what Councilmember Anderson had, I think you mentioned Maxfield. I don't know if staff has had any chance to explore these possibilities or, I, because I'm, I think it's a worthwhile idea, and I just am logistically trying to figure out how do we get from here to there, given the time constraints we have.
Maxfield Research, they're probably the predominant ones, and they do the most work. And they do a lot of work for municipalities. I think in November, I had an interpolation done of the studies that were done for Bloomington, St. Louis Park, and Golden Valley, and forwarded that to everybody on the council. So what that does is it, it suggests what absorption can be by housing type and will make suggestions of how many affordable housing units can you fill today? How many three bedrooms? How many condos? How many rentals? How many? So is that the end of it? Not necessarily. What it is, is it's a good recommendation. And what's important is that it's by an objective, professional outfit that does nothing but that.
Right.
So incorporating that into a comp plan or using it as a guideline for a housing policy task force, I don't know how you do it without it, to be honest.
Yeah.
Because it opens, there's too much speculation about decisions that are made here. And when you have an objective party viewing that, it's, you know, if you ask the chief over there, he talks to you about a body cam. That's a body cam. Because what it does is, it, it gives us a viewpoint. And it, it's, you can point to it later and say, gee whiz, this is what it said. And if we don't agree with it, then let's find out why we don't agree with it.
Yeah, I think, you know, at least my vision of the housing task force that we're going to talk about later, part of that is gathering some data so that we know what we're talking about. So it sounds like a good idea to me. I'm, but how do we work the logistics to?
We call Maxfield Research. Once, once.
Well, maybe Mr. Neal might be.
I did. I called him yesterday and had a quick discussion with him just to see what, how long does this take, right? And I talked to the president briefly. It would take about 30 days for them to get to us. So they have a bit of a queue right now for what we're talking about. And it would take anywhere from 90 to 120 days to complete the, the sort of scope of study that Councilmember Anderson has shared with us from a couple of our neighboring cities. So that's where we are. You know, it could be closer to 90 if, if we do some of the data gathering and sharing on our end, and so they don't have to do that. So that's a possibility. But that's about the timeframe that we're talking about here.
And I know, first of all, if we put together a task force, which I think we absolutely should, they need base information to work from. So this is, I would assume what you would just have to do. If we didn't do it, they're going to, they're going to come to us later and ask for it. So by initiating it now, we can sort of get ahead of the curve. I just want to prepare everyone right now. I think in our minds, we think, and we're going to get to this topic, this task force can start and finish something in six months so it can neatly pack right into our comp plan. And I just want us to prepare mentally for the idea that the comp plan might have to refer to, just like we did with small area planning. You can't, the comp plan's never a finished product. It's where we are today. And if we have important issues about how we're going to manage growth and what type of growth and where it is, those are things that will continue on. And so all of this, if we can't make it happen in six months, I don't think we should look at it as a, as a disaster, right? We've just got to move forward.
So I don't know if that timeline, I mean, I think that, I guess I would be reluctant to wait to start circulating this until 120 days from now. So I'm, I mean, I guess what I, what I could envision us doing is getting started on that now, even before we, you know, select the task force. And we can talk about that more, I guess. But, but I know, Councilmember Anderson, you had some reluctance about going ahead with the comprehensive plan circulating before we did that. I don't know if this information helps you at all on that front.
I don't think we have 120 days to wait for circulation, do we? No, we don't. And so, as I say, I can support this on the basis, it moved earlier. We need a professional housing study. And so are we going to do that or not? Can we incorporate that into the plan? We will have that before the plan's finalized, without question. And that can be considered at that time. It can be taken into consideration. I think that'd be very important. It also, we'll, we may not, we may not get the study prior to the, the policy task force completing their work. And then I guess the question is asked, if it exists, how soon can they get it? How quickly can Maxfield or another vendor, how quickly can they move on this? How quickly can we begin to develop baseline information? It's, you know, these items are so critical to the housing chapter here, in my opinion. They're, they're critical. And so we're, we're kind of, and I understand that this is a draft plan. If we approve the draft plan without information to help guide housing decisions into the future, from the task force, from an independent study, it, it's a question mark for me. So I, I, well, that, it's a question mark for me as a result.
Yeah. And I, I mean, my own perspective is, that's got to be part of the task force's information that they're using. I mean, that and other material before they can give us a meaningful kind of set of recommendations about how to, what our strategy ought to be going forward. And I do think it probably goes to Councilmember Fisher's reality check about the timeline. But, but I think, you know, earlier I asked Director Teague about the timeline in terms of, you know, we've got the comp plan, but then the council, the Met Council is going to take a while to approve it. And then we've got another nine months to change our zoning code. So we do have some lead time to be able to get our strategy in place before, you know, before we have to change the zoning code accordingly.
Could I ask a question of Director Teague? Do we have to approve the draft comprehensive plan update in order to be able to circulate it to our neighbors? Could we just authorize the circulation of the plan as it is to our neighbors without us acting on it? Or are they going to say, well, you sent us something to look at that you'd never even approved?
Yeah. If, if there are substantial changes that are made in December, we'll likely have to circulate it again to adjacent cities.
They got to be able to rely on it as a bona fide document from our elected.
Even though they know it's a draft and subject to change. And we may need to, I think we had to do that in '08. I think we had to recirculate it. I'm not sure.
Yeah. I think we rewrote it. You know, it took up to a year to make all those revisions. And then we circulated it.
So for me, the conversation about Maxfield or some other third party that would study housing was more appropriate to our subsequent discussion on housing task force than as a, as a key condition of moving this forward to our neighbors. I think we can kind of do a track it. And then we should be able to have, we'll have enough time to be able to look at their data. And if we have to, if we, if we made significant changes, changes in the land use chapter or the housing chapter that caused us to have to recirculate it to our neighbors, that wouldn't be the end of the world. But in the meantime, we can keep things moving forward.
Correct. Yeah. And even if the housing, if the comp plan is approved in December and the, the housing study happens shortly after that, it could be an amendment into the, the new comprehensive plan, kind of on a separate comprehensive plan amendment track. There's some, there's a couple of options there, I think, for us.
I think that's what, you know, looking forward to the housing task force discussion that we're going to have, I think that's what's intended there, is to not have it hold back this comp plan draft.
So I've got another question for you, Member Anderson. With respect to, I use Maxfield because I've, I remember in years gone by, I've had some exposure to, let's say, a study they did for a developer.
I've used them before in that regard.
Yeah. So, you know, as you think about potential projects coming into our town, you'd think that they would be using, as you say, something, someone like Maxfield that would help analyze for their purposes of investment.
That's correct.
Potential investment in a particular town, whether or not there's a saturation, for example, in multifamily.
An area market study is what, you know, what relates to a specific development. What you look at there, of course, is What you look at there, of course, is how many units are you planning? Where's it going? Then the market study is kind of determining, will that work or not, based on what you're proposing on a specific building. The housing needs study will look at the whole community. And based on that, will determine what you can absorb, their recommendations. I mean, it's, nothing is cast in concrete ever, we all know that.
Okay, so, does someone want to make a motion to approve the draft comprehensive plan update and authorize staff to release it to adjacent communities and affected agencies for their six-month review?
So moved.
Well, we already had a motion earlier.
Is it just one? Yes, thank you. And I just, I want to mention that I may not vote for this tonight, but I will look forward to, as we complete it, and as these items go forward, I'll look forward to being able to vote for it in the future.
Is there a second?
Second.
Further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed?
Nay.
Carried. All right, we're going to move on to reports and recommendations. And we've got Jeff Brown with us to talk about recycling, and we.
Is this, oh. Mr. Stewart, thanks for coming over this evening.
Can you hear me?
Mr. Mayor, I could tee this up while Mr. Brown and Spinner are looking at their, getting this set up. Oh, they're ready to go.
All right, we are moving into the reports and recommendations portion of the agenda. And the first matter in front of us is whether to approve a staff recommendation on residential recycling collection. And Jeff Brown's with us.
Thanks, Mayor Houghlin, members of the council. I'm Jeff Brown, Community Health Administrator for the city. And tonight, we are taking the next step in choosing our new vendor for residential curbside recycling collection. I'll go over a brief review of the process up to this point, and then get to the staff recommendation. So the request for proposal was sent out in October of last year with submissions due by the end of 2018. We received submissions from three companies, Waste Management, Republic Services, and Eureka Recycling. And the factors that are listed there were used to evaluate the proposals. On March 5th, staff proposed the options you see there to council, and council selected option three, to defer the contract and do community engagement regarding collection frequency, mainly weekly versus biweekly, from that point in time to May 1st. And that community engagement was conducted in two ways, using our new Better Together Edina online platform. It's kind of, it was kind of an online forum for comments. And then we did contract with the Morris Leatherman Company to do a phone survey, reached about 370 folks in town. And the online forum was really split basically even, and you can see summaries of these in your packet. But the phone survey was pretty much two to one in favor of keeping every other week collection. Some of the comp, most of the reasoning for the two to one, or most of the reasons given for staying with every other week collection was those people don't have capacity issues and don't want to pay more for the collection. The main comments for switching to weekly was about capacity. So given that input from the community, staff is proposing the option on screen, choosing Republic Services and staying with every other week collection for 2020. The added, I guess, positive in selecting our existing vendor is we won't have the complication of collecting carts and redistributing carts in the winter to start in January of 2020. So after tonight, if council approves that staff recommendation, we'll enter into negotiations with Republic to sign a new contract, or get a new contract drafted, and then bring that back to council for approval, and start in 2020 with a new contract. Questions?
Questions for Mr. Brown? Comments? Thanks for doing this work. Member Staunton?
I thought this was just really fascinating. I mean, between the, I thought the Better Together platform, what was most revealing about that wasn't the numbers, but the ideas. When people were, I mean, they just thought about things. I mean, the whole consequence of we're trying to do recycling to improve our environmental sustainability profile, but then that had a truck coming down the street twice as often. And people pointed that out, that there's a trade-off there. And then I thought, what did it cost us to do the Morris Leatherman study?
Yeah, that's about right. Eight thousand.
All right, so, it's a, you got to choose your spots when you use that. But it, but that was an effective piece of information as well, so. Anyway, I'm supportive of the recommendation. I think it was a good process of thinking through it a little further before we made a final decision, and this was really valuable information.
Any comments, Member Fisher?
I think, you know, the whole process was great, you know, that we, you know, a recommendation came to us, and I think it was tempting to just go with that, because it felt like it made sense on so many fronts. But the creative ideas we got, I thought were really helpful, and clearly, the, you know, we're swayed by the numbers. The one thing that somebody mentioned is, you know, for those people that have capacity issues, and trust me, you know, we're there sometimes, is there a way to, instead of running extra trucks and picking up twice as often, could there be like a collection point that's somewhat secured where if people just couldn't stand having extra recycling in their house on, you know, the day after Christmas or whatever, they could actually go there and?
There is.
Get rid of it?
There is.
Is there?
At Hennepin County facility in Bloomington.
Well, we had a meeting earlier this week with our colleagues from Bloomington and Richfield, and both, I think both of those cities have set up sort of standalone kind of community recycling drop-off centers. And so, there's a way to do that. It's kind of the way that recycling started 25 years ago. They started like that.
Absolutely is. And that's what I'm thinking, you know, if Republic's coming down the streets that once a week and they're grabbing stuff, there could be a common place. They go and take that. And it's not, you know, it's not going to happen all the time, but it just, it solves both problems, you know? No, granted, the people that want pickup every week aren't thinking in their head, this will be awesome, I'm going to throw out my car and I'm going to, but it is a way to resolve those that have, at points in their life, you know, a little bit of a capacity issue there.
Okay, Member Brendel?
Thank you. I was actually surprised at how close the numbers were between the folks who prefer to remain every other week, 51 percent, and the folks who would prefer every week, 32 percent. Those numbers are closer than I expected them to be. And that, I guess that kind of tells me that maybe there is going to be some trending as we, as we go forward, and whether, whether people are going to prefer an every week, I don't know. But how long is the contract? When would we look at this again?
We anticipate the contract being seven years. So that's, that's what our current contract was.
Okay.
We would do the same term. But you're right, it's, we do hear from people that have capacity problem, they call and say, can I have an extra pickup, or can I have another cart? And that is an option now, they can have an extra cart for no charge. So that's, that's addressing that capacity concern in some ways. And we have adjusted our container storage ordinance a little bit to be a little more flexible. So hopefully, those things together will help address some of that capacity issue, and maybe we'll have less people that want that weekly collection.
Okay. All right, let's see here. Within that seven years, is it possible to do another community engagement just to find out where, where we are and whether people's preferences have changed at that point?
I think that's definitely possible. We talked about that quite a bit, and we've talked with the hollers about that, you know, if during the life of the contract?
Okay.
We find that the meter has swung in that way, is that an option? And obviously, they would need lead time to get trucks and that kind of thing, and we'd have to work that out, but that's definitely something to talk about.
Okay. And as far as the vendor selection or recommendation, I don't have any problem with the recommendation to continue with Republic. I haven't heard any horrible things about service generally, I think, I think it's good. Once in a while, you go through a neighborhood and go, ooh, I think it was recycling day here, because things get missed as, as the, as the cart gets tossed into the truck. And I know that Republic would love the drivers to stay in the truck and keep moving, but it'd be nice to have them look back and check their work and make sure there isn't something to pick up so that they aren't leaving litter in the neighborhood. So that'd be my only, and I don't, I think everybody would be, would need to be reminded of that. So I don't think that's on Republic is any more than anybody else. So, thank you.
Member Anderson, any thoughts?
Well, here's my thought. Member Brendel, about a month ago, talked about the fact that at some point in time, we'll be taking one bag of trash out, and then the rest of it will be recycling, which I thought, gee whiz, I'm not too sure about that, until my daughter and her husband and their three children moved in with us. And now, I would, I'm all for twice a week recycling pickup. So, well done. Thank you for your work.
All right, we have a motion with respect to the staff recommendation that we select the biweekly collection proposal submitted by Republic?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All right. Any further discussion? Those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Opposed? Carried? And then we are on to.
Thank you, Jeff.
Yeah, thanks, Jeff. This portion of the agenda, the discussion about the Comprehensive Housing Strategy Task Force, and Councilmember Staunton is going to lead this discussion.
Well, let me just kick it off, and then I'll let staff fill in. Scott, maybe you can kind of outline the details of it. This is, you know, obviously, we spent a lot of time talking about this already this evening, but it really grew out of a desire to drill into the housing question more directly. One of my discomforts with our affordable housing policy hasn't been that we've done it, but that it seems as like it's been out of context. And we needed to do something in order to not miss opportunities to create new units as they came about. But it always felt like it was part of a bigger housing strategy, in particular in light of the comments that I made earlier about the changing nature. We're pretty full up on our single-family housing inventory. And so the question is, you know, if you think about our housing as a portfolio, what other things do we need as a community to be rounded out in a way that we want to be? And to help people who want to stay in the community but don't want to be in a single-family home any longer, have a place that they want to go to, or people who want to come to the community but don't need a single-family home yet to get into the community? And how do we make it so that we've got a range of affordability? Too often, affordable housing is talked about as a binary notion, that it's either affordable or it's not. But I think there's really room for a whole range of affordability, so that people at the right times of their lives can have the right opportunity for housing that fits their financial needs, fits their lifestyle needs, fits what, how they want to live, and not have to leave our community to do that. I mean, certainly, I'm not making anybody move out of their single-family home, I'm not making anybody stay in the community if they want to leave the community. But I think we need to have a conversation, and obviously, even when I suggested this, I didn't, it was before we got all the, all of the input we've gotten on the comprehensive plan, and I think that was just a coincidence that now it's coming in to be, I think, quite handy for us to be studying this, because it's clearly an issue the community is concerned about, so. So I asked that staff put together some kind of a task force, and I think it's important for us to try to move quickly, but this group will need data. And I think the housing study we talked about earlier is a good piece of data for them to have at some point before they're kind of producing their analysis. And then the only other thing, you know, I'll ask Manager Neal to go through kind of how the program's laid out, but I think we should think carefully about the charge to this group, so that we're being precise about what we're looking for at the end. Obviously, it's our decision at the end about what course to chart, what strategy to adopt for housing, but I'd like to have as much information and advice as possible before we do that.
Thank you, Councilmember Staunton. One of the things that we have learned, and we being city staff with regards to task forces, is that we can attract a, we can, we can attract a lot of volunteer interest to our task forces if we can demonstrate to folks that we have a concise process, it has a beginning, a middle, and an end, that people today, in 2019, are more apt to volunteer to serve on a task force if they know that it's not going to just be an ongoing commitment. They're willing to put their time into an effort like this for their community, but they, they want to be able to have a sense that it's going to have an end. And we hear that over and over from folks, and really, that's one of the underlying benefits of establishing a city council task force charge statement like we have before you tonight. It has, it lays out the purpose, objectives, strategies, timeline, levels of authority, what the city council is going to do, what the city manager is going to do, what the task force can do. And then it gives you a sense of, of when, when they will report back to you at certain times in their timeline, and what they will do ultimately at the end of their, at the end of their project, what's their deliverable to you. So that's what's laid out for you tonight. I have had a couple of conversations with Councilmember Staunton and our, and our staff team that works on this proposal, and that's, that's how it has gotten into sort of this proposed shape that you're seeing tonight. But certainly, before we go any further with soliciting volunteers from the community, we want to make sure that this says what you want it to say, and that we're precise in, in the right places in this document.
Thoughts from council members?
Well, go ahead.
Thank you. A couple things. Number one, I see under resources available, do we have the ability to, to bring a consultant? I mean, we bring consultants in on the small area plans. I'm wondering, do we have the ability to bring a consultant in here to work with this group?
Oh, we do.
We do?
Yes, we do.
Okay, so I think that's important. Guidance is very good there. And then I just think that the selection process, we can ask for volunteers and have a bunch. The qualification of the volunteers that relates specifically to housing is, I think, quite important to recognize. And we have, I think, in doing this, an opportunity, and by the way, thank you, Member Staunton, for originating this idea, because putting it into play is very important, I think. We have an opportunity to bring some creativity and originality to solving some of the housing issues that we see emerging. So this is a great, a great opportunity to do that. So I'm really excited about this occurring. If I can help in any way, please let me know. I think that affordable housing is important to note in this. I think that affordable housing is important to note in this. I think that age-restricted housing may be as important as affordable housing, and by the way, they converge. And so I'm anxious to find a formula for creating affordable housing that is age-restricted, because it's the nature of the beast in terms of the age group that we have, I mean, a large number of people aging here in our city. And I think it's the nature of the beast that you have reduced assets, that you have reduced resources. And so when you look at affordable housing for that group of people, it just falls into line. So if we can create that and create a conduit to single-family homes that can be available to others moving into the community that still may be at least reasonably affordable or at the lower end of the price spectrum, I think that's a home run all the way around. So I'm really looking forward to this.
Any other comments from council members? Member Brendel?
Thank you. Good thoughts. And I was going to ask about the adding, including a professional as part of the task force, and I do think that that would be a good move, particularly in that they understand market absorption. And when Ron first sent out the information, which happened to be about St. Louis Park, and then the interpolation, taking that and applying it to Edina, I looked at it, and it was numbers, but I didn't have any context for it. And so I think it will be important for someone to help this task force to understand the context and apply it, because it'll, I think it'll make the task force more effective and allow us to get a better result. While I might be willing to serve on a task force like this, I couldn't take this to, I couldn't take it to home base, because I can't provide that context. So I think it'll be good. Looking at, okay, so looking at the planning commission meeting where they had the public hearing on the comprehensive plan draft, Commissioner Lee suggested a recommendation that population be wrapped into the discussion of housing, that if the housing task force looks at how density is going to happen, what types of housing, what, who is going to be a target for that housing, it is naturally going to affect population. Do we see the result of this task force being able to provide any guidance on population? That if they see a growth of X, that it would affect a population growth of this? Do we see that happening or coming out of this?
Councilmember Brendel, members of council, I, at the risk of telling you how to do your job, which is always a risk for a city manager, right? I think one of the things that happens in this process, the way it's designed, is that there is some information gathering and learning that occurs in like the first half of the process. And then that group, that task force, is going to come to you for a check-in. I think we, and then you will give them some additional guidance on how they inform you of what they've learned about our housing stock and about the trends and directions and trajectories of growth and decline. I think it's not right to think of a housing study is going to tell us, the housing study isn't going to solve our problems for us in the housing sector. It's going to be a cold document about what the baseline of our housing stock is, what's growing, what's not, and how fast or how slow. It's going to be up to you as policymakers then to say, I see what reality is, I don't like reality, I want it to go up, I want it to go down, I want this part to get bigger and this part to get smaller. It's really up to you to make those determinations. And then when you give that feedback back to the housing, to the task force, it's then that they begin to get creative and bring back recommendations about how they can make that happen. That's the way this is somewhat designed.
If I can piggyback on that, what I am hoping at the end of this that we have is a combination of data and input, both from these seven members that we appoint, as well as the people they engage in our community, that can permit us to tell the development community what we want in our community and where we want it. And then the population stuff takes care of itself.
Okay.
But your hand as the elected representatives of the people is the hand that guides the direction that this is going in.
Okay. So my question comes from the prescriptive nature of the recommendation that was made at planning. And so I did want to have that discussion, so thank you. All right.
Could you speak a little bit to the type of consultant that you could see being of assistance in this matter?
Well, okay, I don't know if I answered the question the right way. I see that this group, this task force, is going to require some good baseline data. So I do support the idea of a Maxfield study of our housing stock, I think would be very important to them. So that's one kind of professional. I would appoint Stephanie Hawkinson, our affordable housing manager, to be the staff liaison to the group. I think we are rich in real estate expertise and knowledge in this community, and we're going to have, I think we're going to have great choices, difficult choices, for the five of you to decide which people to put on this group, and that includes naming a chair. And I would suggest to you that that's going to be maybe the most important thing that you do with regards to this task force. We were very fortunate to be able to find James Pierce and Jesse Kingston at just the right time to guide that task force, and they were both able to do that very professionally because they do that kind of thing in their day jobs, too. I think we're going to be able to find people in the real estate world that live in this community and want to help and are willing to, you know, roll up their sleeves for this kind of task for their town.
The other thing I would suggest is, I would leave it to the task force and the liaison to come back to us if they think they need additional, you know, it could be that the Maxfield study gets them up through the data analysis stage, but when they're going to do some engagement with the community, they feel like they need somebody to help facilitate that, or, you know. I could see a variety of things, but I'd look to them for guidance.
Yeah, it's a resident-led effort, just like other efforts we have.
And, you know, the last, I was on the last housing task force this city had, and it was a long time ago. And at that time, we were in a place where we didn't feel we could call it an affordable housing, we couldn't use the word affordable housing. It had that kind of bad connotation. At that time, in that place, we actually, the city actually had a facilitator for that task force, which worked out really well. It was like 18 people, though, right? It was a big group, very differing opinions, and a facilitator made a lot of sense. I think with this model, I think certainly we can go into it thinking that, you know, whoever we select will be able to manage that, but if they can't, you know, I think you always have that option to bring in an outside facilitator. Just to speak to the mayor's question about what type of consultant, I think a group like that is going to need to be directed to sources of information. And, you know, you could call Mary Boujol over at Maxfield or any one of a number of others who might suggest someone who is available and can be that kind of director or facilitator. I think it'll be useful in order to get lift off and so that they're directed, more or less, if there is an independent housing needs analysis occurring here, and they're working in here assembling information, when those two converge, I think you have a pretty powerful set of documents, very powerful information that you can really use to move forward on, at least rely on.
I would propose to keep an eye on that, and if that seems to be the way that the need of the group tends to be trending, I would pay attention to that and find them the right guidance, and Mary Boujol and other people in that business are good sources of that kind of information. But what I really think we're going to have is the kind of thing that we see year after year after year, and Councilmember Anderson is a great example of it, are the kind of people that show up and be on your Board of Appeal and Equalization, are strong professionals, they want to come in, they want to serve, they give their time and their expertise, and we have the best Board of Appeal and Equalization of anywhere in this state, I would contend. I think we're going to see that same kind of person volunteer for a kind of task force like this.
Another resource I think we should think about would be Jack Rice for one. He might be a source of information, but who would be helpful here? And then also Herb Towesley over at St. Thomas, I think he could be real helpful in terms of potential resources for us, and maybe a resource himself.
Maybe.
In the real estate department over there.
So what we would propose to you is, if you approve this tonight, we would immediately begin the process of soliciting the community for folks. We have an application, we take some personal data from them. We would propose to you that in order to keep this moving with some level of momentum, that we do, that we appoint the members of this on a paper search, so much like you did for the race and equity task force. You reviewed credentials, and you made some decisions as a group without having to do a lot of face-to-face interview, without having to do any, actually, face-to-face interviews, which would greatly slow down the process of getting this group off and running. And we would bring that back to you at your first meeting in June for appointments.
All right. So do we have a motion to approve the Comprehensive Housing Strategy Task Force, following the parameters discussed in the city manager's memo, which is labeled the Edina Housing Strategy?
So moved. Second.
Got a motion second with regard to the motion stated, as stated. Further discussion? All those in favor of the motion stated, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? Carried? All right, on the correspondence of petitions, and we have a petition that was, it's requesting a street reconstruction of Woodland Road and Brookview Avenue with curb and gutter and storm sewer improvements. We need a motion to receive that petition and refer it over to the engineering department.
So moved.
Is there a second?
Second.
All right. We got a motion second to receive the petition from the Woodland Road and Brookview Avenue neighbors requesting street reconstruction. Any further discussion? All those in favor of accepting or receiving that petition and referring it to engineering for further study, say aye.
Aye.
Aye? Opposed? And then we are on to aviation noise update. Anything there, Member Brendel?
Yes, a couple of things. The next meeting of the Noise Oversight Committee is Wednesday, May 15th, at 1:30 at MAC headquarters on 28th Avenue. And public is welcome to attend. There is a community comment portion of the meeting, so if anyone would like to come and make a comment or leave a question for the NOK to respond to, they're welcome to do that. And then a little development. So there are, there's a variety of at-large communities. There might be seven, I think. But currently, Brian Hoffman of St. Louis Park is the at-large representative who sits on the dais for the NOK. And so next week, I believe that the at-large group of seven cities is going to meet, and Brian is going to make a recommendation that I take his place and sit at the dais for the Noise Oversight Committee, which I'm happy to do. It's good work, it's great people, and there is a separate task force being formed, and one of the at-large, one of the other at-large representatives wants to serve on that. And so Brian, I think, is going to suggest to the at-large group and get a vote on that. And so I anticipate that happening on the 15th. There is a community listening session that the MAC will hold on July 24th. It will be in Edina at the Southwest Metro Public Safety Training Facility Wednesday, July 24th, at 7:00 in the evening. So all are invited to attend, whether they want to watch the presentation and learn about airport operations and some of the efforts and trends related to noise, or if they want to make comments that evening.
Good. Thank you. Member, or excuse me, Manager Neil, anything further to add on aviation noise?
No, nothing further.
All right. And then mayor and council comments, Member Fisher.
Yeah, the only comment I would make is sort of a discovery that I've made this last week. So my wife's mother passed away, and this was Friday. And so the week before, when she left the hospital, we had to find a place for her to go, a hospice. And we did all this research and found in my own neighborhood, the NC Little Hospice. And, you know, we all have these conversations about what, you know, things, land use and uses here, and what's appropriate, and this little place is sort of invisible to most of us every day, but is truly a treasure in our community, in my neighborhood. And until you have the opportunity, and I guess most of us don't want that opportunity, right? But when that part of your life happens, you realize what a gift a place like that is. And I just wanted to say that because I don't know how hard it was for them to get approvals whenever they, you know, or when that happened. It was well before my time here. But whatever sacrifices were made, and whatever, you know, sacrifices the neighbors may make today with people driving up and coming and going at all hours, it's truly a gift to this community. So, thanks.
Thanks. Member Staunton, welcome home.
Thank you. I guess the only thing that I want to update folks on is next week, so before the time we meet again, I will have my last meeting on the Board of the League of Minnesota Cities, which has been three years already.
Already?
Yeah. So I'll be coming off that board, and it's been a terrific experience. And I am going to go to Duluth for the state meeting in June. I'd invite any of you who are interested to come along as well. That's always a great thing. I'm going to serve on the nominating committee to elect and appoint new members to the Board after me. So it's been a terrific experience, and I've enjoyed it very much, and hope to continue to have a constructive relationship with folks over there.
Thank you. Member Brendel?
I have a few things. The Better Together Edina website is great. I would sort of like to take that template and make it the Edina website. It's so easy to use. So hopefully, the city website can evolve to something that is as easy and fun, really fun to use. So it's great. And just a shout-out, so many people here tonight. Thank you, everyone who attended. the public hearing, and really a heartfelt thank you to everyone who has and continues to work on the comp plan update. That is a huge body of work, and, and it needs to be done well, and it is being done well. So it is, it's much appreciated. On April 30th, along with several people up here, I attended the Board and Commission annual meeting where we, we thanked retiring commissioners and welcomed new incoming commissioners. So the new Red River Kitchen opens this Friday, May 10th. So we asked the manager to talk a little bit about it. It'll be pub food, great burgers and salads, and he is a fan of craft beers, so there will be a nice selection of local brews, and both alcoholic and non, and it'll be a lot of fun to see that open up, and, and just in time for the golf course to open and be busy. So I'm really excited about that. On Sunday, April 28th, I attended Days of Remembrance. Thank you to the members of the Edina Human Rights and Relations Commission, it was a great event. You always learn a lot at that event, and you appreciate what you have when you visit with someone who has made it through something that you can't imagine how they survived. On Friday, April 26th, Hope Melton and Susan Lee and I visited a housing complex in Hopkins. I had been talking about a pocket neighborhood, and this is a neighborhood called Regency, it's a development in Hopkins called Regency, it's on Van, Van Buren Avenue is one of the avenues that goes through it. But it's single-family homes, it's condos, and it's townhomes. And the idea is that the setbacks are narrow, and, and it's really charming. So you have a cluster of homes and a playground, and you have a cluster of homes and a playground, a little extra parking here, a little extra parking there for guests. But the homes are clustered together. And so looking at that and saying, where could we do this? We do have, at, at, along Vernon, Vernon Lane, and we have several homes that definitely are not in the affordable category, but, but it's a cul-de-sac in there, and those homes are large and tight, whereas the, the homes in the Regency development are of moderate size, they're upstairs, downstairs, family homes, and it just, it does, it's very intriguing. So, but we went over there. I heard from a resident today that says, I want to remind everybody to keep Edina beautiful. So, so just remembering to mow and weed and pick up trash and all of those things to, and when you take a walk, take a plastic bag with you to pick up trash along the way. Those are my comments. Thank you much.
Thank you. Member Anderson?
Thank you. You know, I'm, earlier tonight, we had a session with the Transportation Commission, as well as the Park Board, and they're, they've left now. There were a couple of members of the Planning Commission, they were all here tonight, but many of them, a couple were really hanging in there for a long time. And I, I just, I'm reflecting on the, the interaction that we have, or sometimes don't have, with the Boards and Commissions. And I, it's, it's just a checklist for me to get to more of those meetings and sit in on them, and communicate a little bit better, because those people are volunteers, they spend so much time, they take it so seriously, and they're so committed. And I, it's, it was just interesting to hear a couple of things there tonight that jarred my memory about you got to get there. So that's my plan.
Yeah, good. Thanks for that comment. Just looking at the calendar as other folks were talking, on the 23rd of April, had, they had a social gathering on the 50th in France, small area plan group over at the Jack and Edie Rice home, that was a nice event. And then the next morning, Manager Neil and I had breakfast with the county administrator and, and our commissioner, Jan Callison, on, on some issues that were county-related, which causes me to think about Xerxes Avenue as a county road, and the diversion of traffic that's taking place over on Xerxes as a result of the resurfacing of the bridge on France Avenue. And some of the angst the residents are feeling over there that they've felt in years past, and now it's resurfaced here as we, as traffic has diverted that direction, and I think they've sent a couple of emails my way and your way, Director Milner, as to what can we do to make sure we keep people as safe as possible over there. I don't know if you have any comment on that or not.
Well, I can say staff, engineering staff, and inspectors are in that, in that area for street recon, PD has been out there monitoring the situation, the county and MINDAT. And if we see some very problematic safety concerns, all those agencies are going to work together to come up with a solution. So thus far, we haven't heard of anything, that just continually happens from a, from a safety and welfare standpoint. MINDAT had an update meeting today, and I didn't get that update yet, so I'm going to check in with them tomorrow to see where they're at on the traffic standpoint, because they wanted to give it a few weeks before they potentially did anything to make any changes. So I can provide some updates to you when I have that information.
Yeah, I'm sure the traffic volume is quite a bit heavier over there as a result of that resurfacing on France Avenue.
For sure.
And is that still on schedule to be finished in July sometime?
That's what I'm hearing, yep.
Okay, good. And then on the 26th, I joined a group of our residents and, and our arborist, Luther Overholt over at Countryside Park for Arbor Day. We planted some trees over there and had some young kids there, it was a lot of fun. Somebody sent some photos, I think somebody from the city took some photos, Jennifer may have them somewhere, it might be worth posting up. And then on the 1st of May, I went to the Edina Public School retirees celebration, there were like 29 people, I think, that retired from the school district in various capacities, mostly teachers, but also folks that were bus drivers and administrative people. It was a nice event. Then on the 2nd of May, I ran over at noon to help Florence Halverson celebrate her 100th birthday, and declared it to be Florence Halverson Day in Edina in celebration of her 100th birthday, and so they were grateful about that, and she was right on top of it. She was ready to go play table tennis when I was finished. And she had just apparently stopped playing regular tennis about four years ago, so. And then on the 4th, I ran, I went, I was on a Saturday, Cub Scout Talk over Troop 123 over at Shepherd of the Hills, spent some time over there with those young guys, and that was awards day over there, and they've got one of those blended packs now with the boys and girls together, which is terrific. And then that afternoon, I went to Torskak Kluben over at Interlochen with, Member Staunton's neighbor, Bob Tangden invited me over there, I was with his son, and spent a little time over there having, eating food that was all white, boiled potato and a piece of torsk. So, as Bob Tangden's son Dave said, I put a lot of pepper on it just to get some depth And then we had, anyhow, Creek-Watershed District meeting on the, on the 6th. Manager Neil and I were over there on Monday morning with Dick Miller to get an update on some things, and we were reminded that if we needed anything else down at Arden Park, let them know. And then tomorrow is Walk and Bike to School Day, I'll be over at Concord early in the morning, and then it's also Taste of Edina tomorrow. Remind folks of that in the late afternoon, that the chamber is putting on that event over at the Westin, I assume. And Member Brindle mentioned Days of Remembrance, you know, Edina is the only city, I think, in the metro still continuing this Days of Remembrance event after nine years, it was done nationwide nine years ago, but we've continued on and bringing in Holocaust survivors, and they had a woman named Louise Dilleri who saw her dad taken away by, you know, Nazi folks in, in Paris, and somehow they didn't take her as a 16-year-old, she doesn't know why. She talks about all the, all the angels she's had looking out for her during her life, and that was certainly a moment in time when people were taking care of her when she was on her own, her dad was gone. And then, of course, on Friday, the plant sale, Garden Council plant sale starts, so if you want to make good use of your council member's salary, want like a month's worth of council salary, you can do it in a hurry over there at the Garden Council, but then you can be one of the supporters of the new, the, the new
Tranquility
Tranquility Garden that they're, that they're sponsoring over there. So I'm sure they'd be happy to have all of our attention over there. So that's it for me. Manager Neil?
Thank you, Your Honor. Just a mention of the 2019 Q1 Finance Quarterly Report, that's included as part of the packet. 12 pages, nicely illustrated, will tell you that things are going in the right direction after one quarter of, of 2019. Second item was to, just to let you know that we did complete our first-ever Edina Residential Redevelopment Contractor Accreditation and Training Seminar Session. This was a session we've talked about organizing and doing for quite some time now, with the idea of trying to, to provide an opportunity for both staff to, to hear from the building community, particularly builders that do residential redevelopment projects, and for us to talk to them about what we need for them to, to do that would make everyone's lives run better. We had 43 people sign up and 33 people attend, so we were happy with that for an initial attendance. We do plan to do this on an annual basis, and we, after getting some input from the, from the builders, we now know that probably late January, early February is a ideal time to have this kind of a session. But it allowed us to put all of our professionals in, in front of the group, ranging from sustainability to building inspections. Our new residential redevelopment coordinator, Addison Lewis, had a time, had an opportunity to meet all the builders that he's going to be working with this summer, engineering, and I'm trying to think of who else, planning, thanks, thanks, Carrie. Planning was there, was part of this, too. It was a great team effort for our group to put this session together, and we got a lot of positive feedback from, from the builders, so we are excited about doing that next year as well. Last thing for me is to let you know that, if you, if you don't know it, that the county, Hennepin County, has made some level of public announcement of their plan for the Southdale Regional Library, and that is to move it into the space currently occupied by Herburgers in the Southdale Center Mall. They would take that existing building down, they would build a new library in its place, it would be a two-story library somewhere between 55 and 60,000 square feet. They are planning to do some, some public open houses in town here, so people can get acquainted with what the plan is going to be. And, and there's also going to be a chance to talk about what, what the process might be to, to redevelop the site of the current library. And we'll bring some more information to you on, on both of those items at the next council meeting in, in May. That's all I got.
All right, great. Thanks, Mr. Mayor.
Member Staunton?
I neglected one item. Last week, our city manager was named President of the Minnesota City Managers Association.
Oh, right.
A recognition by his peers of, of his quality that we all know firsthand, and a real appropriate sign of respect, so congratulations.
Thank you. For the next year.
Bringing that up.
The last time it was an Edina City Manager was 1960.
Once every 50 years?
Yeah, yeah, whether you want it or not, yeah, yeah.
All right, good. Well, that's, we're proud of you.
Thank you.
Thank you. All right, we stand adjourned.